Good evening. We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. It's good to see everyone. Thank you for making it. Hello to you all out there who are watching us on Facebook. Thank you for keeping up what's going on in the county. I will say this while I'm talking, we had a hearing earlier today and a couple of citizens were here and I think they left here better informed. So, thank you for tuning in and prayerfully you will be better informed too as you glean from us what we're doing behind the scenes to make Liberty County a better place. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you, sir. Glad you're here. We ask our Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Joe Moses, to come lead us in our invocation and our pledge for allegiance. Please stand for those two items, please.
That is great. Gracious and most benevolent Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and your bountiful blessings. And Father God, we want to pause and pray for those who are going through during this season. We pray for all those who are in the local hospitals. And then, Father God, we pray that you would endow this august body with the wisdom and divine insight they need to transact important business of this community. We thank you and we praise you and we bless you. For us in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, visible, liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, sir. Before we begin, we want to acknowledge the loss of Riceboro's Mayor, the late Mr. Joseph Harris. Many of us attended his services on Saturday, so our thoughts and prayers extend to that family and that city, our community, and the loss of Mayor Harris. Mr. Brown, if you make a note, minutes, we'd appreciate that, sir. Our approval of September minutes.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion second. We approve the minutes for the month of September. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Minutes for September are approved. Listen, there's a pretty little green basket up here just before we started. Erin, I forgot his last name. The new extension agent brought us a basket. This is Happy National Forest Week, so he said it's for the commissioners. What is it? So, please partake of the basket prior to leaving from the Forest staff. Thank them for that. Proclamation, Rivers Alive. You know, Keep Liberty Beautiful is always doing something. She's forever busy. I saw pictures where she had a volunteer group down St. Catherine's.
Yes, sir.
Not too long ago, St. Catherine's, not too long ago. Tell us about this proclamation.
All right. Good evening. Where Rivers Alive for Liberty County is held, our main event is always held in October, on the fourth Friday of Saturday, which is Make a Difference Day. Rivers Alive is to just let people know about protecting our waterways, large and small, and it's the largest, ours, right here in Liberty County, is the largest Rivers Alive event in South Georgia. Protecting our waterways is critical in Liberty County. We are a coastal county and over forty percent of our land is rivers, streams, creeks, ponds, marshes, and wetlands. So, we hope that you will participate in our main event, which is October the 23rd, and spread the word throughout your districts.
Forty percent?
That's what I was told. Is it more?
No. That explains why we have problems with all the rain we had lately. Forty percent, that's a lot. That's a lot. That's a lot. Mr. Brown, will you read the proclamation for us?
Be glad to. This is a proclamation of Liberty County Board of Commissioners. Rivers Alive is Georgia's annual volunteer waterway cleanup event that targets all waterways in the state, including streams, rivers, lakes, beaches, and wetlands. The mission of Rivers Alive is to create awareness of and involvement in the preservation of Georgia's water resources. Rivers Alive is held annually each fall and is a program of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division Outreach Program. Whereas, the citizens of Liberty County recognize that all life is dependent upon clean water and strive to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of Georgia's waters. And whereas watersheds, their critical component of the hydrologic water cycle, is an integral part of all the earth's systems. And whereas Georgia has seventy thousand one hundred and fifty miles of streams and rivers that nourish our native plants and wildlife. And whereas the mission of Rivers Alive is to create awareness of and involvement in the preservation of Georgia's water resources through this annual volunteer cleanup of the fourteen river basins in Georgia. And whereas October 23rd, 2021, is the forty-ninth anniversary of the Clean Water Act and the International Day of Worldwide Monitoring. And whereas the Liberty County Board of Commissioners recognizes its commitment to engage citizens, civic, and government officials and business leaders to restore and preserve our watersheds in Georgia. And whereas Keep Liberty Beautiful and Liberty County Board of Commissioners are committed to elevate the importance of volunteerism and motivate everyone in our community to become stewards of the environment. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2021, as Rivers Alive Awareness Day in Liberty County this October 5th, 2021, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
And I would also like to point out, these are our new notebooks, and we would like to give each commissioner one that maybe can jot down October 23rd and remember it and join in with us. So, we'll give each one a notebook.
Thank you, ma'am. You make your, do your presentation and make your way to the podium.
Is there any money in this?
Isn't.
Oh, you little.
Karen.
You have a flyer.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I. Got a vote for the bypass?
Thank you.
That's now on the agenda, ma'am.
There was your assistant, right there.
Yes, ma'am. We understand how rushed our way is. Mr. Vio, will you come here, please? We understand how Liberty County rushed our way.
She gave me a little book.
It's before she retired.
But that's all right. What kind of cake?
Any kind you want.
What kind you want?
She's gone into baking. That's what we can do when we try, right? Cook more.
Keep Liberty Beautiful, all that they do for our community, they do a marvelous job. Marvelous.
Is this a contest like they have for the Great American Cleanup between the city and the county?
He said we have the largest, yeah, I guess so. We have, bragging rights, we have the largest volunteer group for this in the southeast, he said.
We won an award last year for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've been.
The county, yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you all. Mm-hmm. All right. Chair, ten motion to go into public hearing to discuss 2021 millage. Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're not in a public hearing.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to share with you some slides that illustrate the history and the digest, our current digest, and historically what millage rate has done and what the digest has done, and then we'll get to your proposed recommended digest. This first slide, can you hit those lights? This first slide just illustrates for you over the last year, last ten years, I'm sorry, of what the gross digest has done, what the exemptions have done, and what our net digest has done. And we've been very fortunate. We had a lot of growth this year. Seems like Liberty County is continuing to grow. The exemptions, though, are also growing, to the tune of about three hundred and thirty-one million this year. And that's a lot of exemptions. As I stated earlier at our first public hearing, we are an exemption-rich county. So, for citizens who live here and retire here, that's wonderful. For a county that depends on property tax for about sixty percent of its general fund revenues, that presents a challenge. Here are those exemptions, and as I said, we are an exemption-rich county. Our two largest exemptions are Freeport, which is about fifty percent of our total exemptions, and then Disabled Veteran, which is about twenty-four percent of our total exemptions. You can see the increase this year. We went from three hundred and six million to three hundred and thirty-one million, another twenty-four million dollars in exemptions. As I said, it's wonderful for citizens, but it is a challenge for the county because those exemptions in total, just for the county piece, that three hundred and thirty-one dollars of exemptions is about five point five million in tax revenue that has to be made up by everybody else. And that's just the county piece. That's not, you know, School Board and City and Development Authority. That's just the county piece. So, that's a lot of exemptions and it's a lot of revenue to have to make up by everybody This gives you a picture of what the millage rate has done over the past ten years. Now, the top one is the county millage rate for the citizens of Heinzville, and we are proposing from 20 to 21 to remain flat at fourteen point eight mils. That's what it was last year. We're proposing that it stay the same this year. The unincorporated rate and the rate for all the other municipalities is proposed to go up point three mils, from sixteen point three to sixteen point six. When we talk about the growth in the digest, you have two types of growth. You have real growth and you have reassessed growth. This illustrates what those have been over the past ten years. The yellow is the reassessed growth and the green is the real growth. You can see back in 2015 and even 12 and 13, we had negative reassessed growth. That just means that your current property has been devalued if we end up having negative reassessed growth. This year, we had plenty of growth. We had a total of a hundred and eight million dollars in total growth and sixty-nine million was actual real growth. That's great. And then we had another thirty-nine million in reassessed growth. Talked to you a minute about Service Delivery Strategies Act, H.Bill 489, which talks about providing services throughout the county and what the cities provide versus what the county provides. Mr. Brown and I talked a little bit about this, and there is no law requiring that we roll the rate back, but we do is in good faith effort so that the citizens of Heinzville are not taxed twice for the same service. So, what this does is if the city of Heinzville, and they are the only municipality in Liberty County that levies a millage, so if the citizens of Heinzville pay for fire services or mosquito control on their city bill, they should not pay for it on their county bill as well. So, there are some services in our general fund that we identify as what we call duplicated services. And we identify a millage piece to those services and we reduce the tax rate for those citizens who live inside the city limits of Heinzville. Some of those, here are some of those services that we roll back for, which means that the city of Heinzville is also providing funding for these same services. So, that's why the county has two millage rates. They have one for the citizens of Heinzville and they also have one for everybody else, those in the unincorporated area and all the other smaller municipalities that don't levy a millage. This slide has a lot of information in it. So, when we take the digest, we have an unincorporated digest, we have incorporated other, which is all of the municipalities with the exception of Heinzville, and then we have the Heinzville digest. If we apply the proposed millage rate of sixteen point six to both the unincorporated and incorporated other, we will generate a little over twelve million dollars. When we apply the fourteen point eight to the Heinzville digest, we get about ten million dollars. Total, at a hundred percent, would be twenty-two point two million dollars in tax revenue. Here's our general fund budget of forty-two point five million. You adopted your budget in June, and when you adopted your budget in June, it was about one point five million dollars less than this. What we've done is included an additional cost of one point five million for the pension shortfall that we were notified of last month. So, your new budget will then be forty-two point five million. When we reduce, when we back out all the revenue other than property taxes to include the use of fund balance that we've identified to use for certain things, like the capital items that you've identified in your general fund and for the pension shortfall, there's about two point two million dollars that we are going to use fund balance to cover. What we need then is twenty-one point seven million dollars in property tax. When I take the twenty-two point two million that we would generate by these proposed millage rates and I reduce it for a ninety-seven percent collection rate, which is high but reasonable, we never get a hundred percent the first year, we would generate about twenty-one point five million, leaving a shortfall of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand. When you talk about a forty-two million dollar budget, a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar shortfall is very manageable because traditionally we have achieved savings and expenditures that would cover that. And if he does collect at a ninety-eight percent collection rate by the end of the fiscal year, that shortfall becomes like thirteen thousand, which is then very manageable because we know, we have never overspent our budgeted expenditure. So, we always, we've always achieved some savings. So, we feel like this shortfall is very manageable and it might not end up being that much at the end of the year. What will that look like? So, if you are in the unincorporated area or all the other, any one of the other municipalities, and you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, last year your taxes at sixteen point three were nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This year, that same home at sixteen point six, your county taxes would be nine ninety-six. That's an increase of eighteen dollars. When you think about all of the things that this board has done last year and this year combined, the full-time firefighters, eighteen last year and eighteen more this year, those eighteen that were hired staggered last year are now budgeted for a full year this year plus an additional eighteen to be staggered. Those primarily benefit the unincorporated area and those other smaller municipalities. When you talk about bringing on EMS that we just did as of September 1, that's about another million and two, somewhere around a million, million and two shortfall that we're going to probably incur when all expenses and revenues are said. And then, since January, we've also hired an additional seventeen new law enforcement, public safety officials that primarily benefit the unincorporated area and those other smaller municipalities. So, this board has done a lot to contribute to services for the unincorporated area and those other smaller municipalities. And that's one of the reasons, I think, that they said, "Look, if we're going to have to increase the millage rate, we need to do it where those benefits serve mostly, those new benefits." And so, we held the city of Heinzville the same at fourteen point eight, and we increased, we recommend to increase, the unincorporated and the other cities by point three, going from sixteen point three to sixteen point six. So, in the Heinzville rate, in the Heinzville area, that same hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you would see no increase in your county taxes, provided there wasn't any increase in your assessment or you didn't add on to your property. What does that look collectively? So, when we take all of the millage rates, you know, the county millage rate, the Board of Ed, the Hospital Authority, and the Development Authority, and this is in the unincorporated area for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, last year your total taxes were twenty-three ten. Because the Board of Ed actually reduced their rate from thirteen, or sixteen point three five eight to fifteen point nine oh two, you're actually going to have a reduction in your Board of Education taxes and an increase in your county taxes, but in total, your taxes will still go down about nine dollars in the unincorporated area for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Thank you, Board of Education. I appreciate you being able to do that. We were not able to do that this year. In Heinzville, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, your taxes last year would have been twenty-eight fifty, this year twenty-eight twenty-three for a savings, again, generated by the Board of Education, of twenty-seven dollars. And that's all I have, unless anybody has something specific questions, then we can take comments or questions from the audience.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
As I stated this morning, I'm going back to the issue with the Hospital Authority, just for those who were not present this morning. With the county commissioners taking the responsibility of about fifty employees away from the hospital, which in the hospital is receiving three point eight mils, which in one mill is approximately one.
One point four million.
One point four million. And what did you say the cost would be to operate EMS?
We'll probably end up losing somewhere about a million dollars.
Okay. So, what I'm getting at, the hospital has been relieved of about fifty employees. The county commissioner now is taking over, but the hospital seems like they would be able to keep that three point eight mil that they were receiving all the time. And I do understand that they do have issues over there, but also this Board of Commissioners got issues, but also I believe that we could have looked at it a little bit closer and probably could have reduced it just a tad more because I understand that there's some equipment that still has to be purchased for EMS that the hospital, I guess apparently is still have, still have in their hands. So, this is not over with yet. So, like I said, I'm just looking at, if we can only look at maybe one mil coming from that three point eight, that would still leave the hospital with two point eight mil to deal with.
And that would be up to this board.
This board would.
I mean, they are recommend, the Hospital Authority is a recommending body.
That's correct.
They will hold their public hearings and they will present their recommendations. It is your vote and your resolution and your levy.
Right. Now, also, when you talk, go back to the exemptions. Okay, you were saying Freeport and Disabled Vet?
There are two largest ones, seventy-nine point nine million and a hundred and sixty-five point six million.
Okay. The Freeport exemption has not been before the voters in Liberty County in over twenty-five years. There's probably a lot of citizens and voters don't know what Freeport actually is. I think somehow another, Mr. Chairman, in due time, as I've said in the past, we need to educate the citizens on what Freeport is. They may say leave it at a hundred percent, but I'm not one of those for enticing a company to come in anymore. They start them off at a hundred percent, forty years later they are still at a hundred percent. It's up to the voters to decide if you want to leave it at a hundred, eighty, sixty, forty, or twenty percent of exemptions. It's up to the voters and it's up to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As Kim alluded to, I want to go back just for the sake of, I'm not sure, do we have anyone here for audit participation today? No? Okay.
Questions on Facebook?
No.
We had one this morning.
Okay. The, just let me say this then, for the sake of those who may be watching on Facebook, you heard that Kim allude to the fire. You know, we, a few years ago, we decided to set up a comprehensive fire department, so we're in the midst of that. So, the number of firemen that she mentioned, that's all part of that process, and a lot of citizens in that county were very interested in that because they wanted to have fire coverage. The only paid, fully paid fire department in the county at one time was set in Heinzville. I think Walter Bill has a few.
Had a part time.
Did, yeah. So, you could be in unincorporated Liberty County, rural Liberty County, and call 911 and no one would come because we found ourselves at disadvantage when it came to be depending solely on volunteers. And it's not just Liberty County, that's something that's going on really nationwide. I heard, the night I heard Walter Bill presenting, their fire chief was talking about their difficulty in getting volunteers. So, that's why we stood up the fire department. EMS, the hospital asked us to take that over, and as Kim said, it's not a moneymaker, it's just a lifesaver. But it's not a moneymaker, it's a lifesaver. And Sheriff is here, he asked for some additional staff, seventeen, to help him to fulfill what he feels the public safety coverage should be in our county. And so, we did that. Another thing that came out this morning, this afternoon really, the gentleman compared, he talked about Liberty County's millage versus other millage rates and want to help to educate everyone that you can't look at just the total millage rate because some counties has fees in the millage rates and some don't. I think Commissioner Walden made a good point that recreation in some counties, you know, you have to pay fully for those things in Liberty County, and we cover most of those expenses, and it's included in your millage. So, you look at a millage rate, make sure you know what's in that rate before you say, "Wow, Liberty County is off the scale compared to, you know, County A, B, C, or D." So, it just works that way. Just a few things I wanted to throw out to the general public as we go through this process. And Commissioner, I'm not sure if I left out anything y'all can certainly add in, but the staff has done a great job, the department head's done a great job submitting their requests. We've gone through those things and some folk were not pleased they didn't get all they wanted, but we have to balance the budget, so. And we are so thankful for the growth this year in the digest.
So thankful.
And I'll just give credit where credit is due. Most of that came within the city of Heinzville. So, all the growth that you see is paying off for us, is paying off for us. And now, someone said this morning, "The growth is starting to spill over a little bit into unincorporated Liberty County," so we're happy to see that, too.
I have no choice. I say there's really no choice but to go into other areas. Heinzville is about.
Yeah. We know the good problem to have, growth versus a dying community, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, but we just have to manage it smartly.
Yeah. Ms. Trevor, I would just like to say that, you know, the slide that Kim showed where, let's say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and the tax increase, but when you, if you heard the services, the enhanced services that she listed, EMS, you know, we need that. It's not, don't try to make money off of it, but we do need that. The law enforcement, the fire services, you know, when you think about that for a county, the size of Liberty County, and a minimal increase, and we did not set out to increase taxes, but.
No.
After, you know, doing everything that I thought we could and sharpening our pencils the way we did to minimize it as much as we were able to, I think it was a good thing and I just think that Liberty County is going to be better for it, for the things that we were able to include with such a minimal cost. That's my call.
I think we're well served. Thank you, sir. And listen, and you all see the continued growth that's around the county, so we look forward to next year, to next year and where that holds for us. So, it's good, and I concur with Commissioner Gillis, man, we were able to offset taxing a millage increase by the digest.
Yeah. You, as I mentioned earlier, you're at a little bit of a disadvantage because you adopt your budget in June before you even know what the digest is going to provide for you. And like I said, close to sixty percent of your revenues are property tax revenues, are millage-based revenues, and so we depend heavily on that digest. And so, yes, when there's growth like we had, you know, to think that somebody in the unincorporated area would only, county taxes would only increase eighteen dollars, that's a dollar fifty a month, for all the extra services that you're going to be guaranteed to have, you've committed to your fire plan, as you said. We started it last year, we're trying to finalize it this year. We committed to taking over EMS because it is an essential service. We've beefed up the public safety law enforcement. We've done a lot, and it is because we've had the digest growth that we only had to go up point three of a mil in the unincorporated and other cities, and we were able to hold the Heinzville rate the same at fourteen.
And I'm hoping that what we've done with the fire department is going to help some local homeowners, and we can't promise, but we hope that it helps some homeowners with their homeowners.
Eventually, when everything is built.
Yes.
Hopefully, those ISO ratings will prove.
So, they'll more than keep that eighteen dollars.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, and I thank Ms. McLaughlin for all her hard work in putting this together, but I really, and I know we all are, happy to see that reassessed growth and the overall growth.
And the overall growth.
Because there was times when it flipped in 2015, where 12 through 15.
I remember.
And we had to go up fairly.
Yeah. We did.
Heavily on the.
On the millage because we had a negative net digest. The negative reassessed growth outweighed the real growth, and so our digest from that year to the next was actually a decrease. So, you were, you were in a time where your budget was growing, but your digest was shrinking. So you were, you were in a time where your budget was growing, but your digest was shrinking. And so that was a very challenging time.
And if you ride through a lot, some of these new subdivisions, most of all of them, those homes are full. I mean, I've run, run through several and.
Somebody moves in.
Right, they're already none empty.
Yeah.
So there's a need here for the development, and I'm glad we're finally seeing it happen and hitting the digest, I guess you could say. And on the other hand too, one more thing I wanted to add too, was the hospital millage rate has not increased in several years. No, the ambulance, the EMS is not going to make us no money, but they're going to come when we call them. And we need to have that service, we've got to have that service available. And having a small hospital is not rule anymore, the Congress has done ruled that out. We're a metropolitan hospital, and I applaud them for what we just went through with this spike in COVID over there. I mean, they've done a fantastic job. Most of this, if not all of this, that we give to them is for indigent care. And for those folks who don't know what indigent care is, it's for people who show up at our hospital without health insurance. And they deserve service just like you and I do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let me say this, if everybody's clear. Just because we're enjoying the data, the growth in the digest, doesn't mean we're going to be frivolous in our habits or in our spending. We maintain the same standards, maintain the same standards. The gentleman mentioned this morning, he talked about SPOSS and SPOSS building buildings. But, you know, whether, whether you're in a SPOSS building, you're in this building, you still got to pay to operate it. You know, you still got to, you still got to operate it, you know. So thankfully, SPOSS can at least build it for you.
Right.
Now, all you have to do then is just operate it and keep it going. But just because the digest is growing, doesn't mean we change all of our habits. All of a sudden, we're spend happy.
Right.
We maintain the same principles, and we appreciate, you know, Kim, you and everybody for the work that you all do behind the scenes to make this county run well. And this is, I'm very proud of what we've done this year.
Yes, I am too, actually.
Very proud.
Too, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to echo you, you pretty much set a mouth, although that a budget is exactly that. And I know it's set in June for a reason, and that is to show restraints. So you'll go ahead and be prepared for what's going to happen in this time. But I think that our constitutional officers have showed restraints. I mean, this gentleman this morning was talking about the Board of Education, and we see they've lowered. But we've got to all understand that they work for, it's a totally different government there. And the chairman has served there, and he knows, you know, what you, that's pretty much, you put it out there. And teachers, the custodians, the bus drivers and all, they live within their means. But you've done a good job, Joey, you and Joseph, everybody has. And I do see some things that was on the countywide exemption, Kim, that was a little bit puzzling, which was your forest land protection, personal property, and of course, your conservation use that's there. And it looks like we're a thousand acres or more down. And I know riding around the county, you see more than a thousand acres cut, so I'm wondering where the tax money is at. But that's not for me to look at. I see some numbers there, which is forest land protection at six. And then we, we but, in two thousand twenty, it was fifty seven sixty two. So you're looking at some property here that's obviously, it's not in there anymore.
No, that one went up. So more property went into forest land protection. The one that dropped was the conservation use. It went from seven to six point seven. It dropped by two hundred and twenty-two thousand. But the forest land protection grew by two sixty-two. So I don't know if they just flipped, they moved their exemption, they moved their property out of conservation use into forest land. I'm not sure how that works.
And that's twofold. That can be timberland that's now being used for residential land, which we talked about this morning. We're seeing that happen in all corners of the county now because, you know, Heinsville, I mean, our other cities has got us in there. So, and there'll be more than that. We all know there's going to be more than that.
Be more than that.
And it's going to be a challenge for us. But, you know, I want to say the challenge is going to be, let's don't spend everything. I mean, and I know the folks that's working out here in these offices, the sheriff, the probate judge, all of our, all of our constitutional officers understand this is a budget, and we're working on a needs-based budget. We've always have, since I've been here. And I just know that the chairman won't tolerate frivolous spending, I won't tolerate it, and the board won't. And I appreciate you taking the time, Kim, Joey, all of y'all. So you've got a June digest that's being adopted at a different time. But I mean, we just pretty much threw the numbers that we thought that was going to be fair. And I do appreciate as a commissioner in the city that we were able to hold everything down to where we had talked about. It's going to be, it's going to be hard, and it's going to be really hard on our smaller cities that's out there to maintain what they've got without having to implement some type of taxes. Because this board cannot continue to go on and do what we've been doing. I can't see it. So I appreciate again that and the rest of the board members. I'm sorry I didn't get to make all of our hearings and the workshops, but I felt like the ones that I did need to be at, I was here. And glad to see Mr. Fraser, I didn't even see him sitting down there.
He always slide in.
Yeah, I know. But, Mr. Chairman, you did a good job.
Thank you, sir. We did a good job. We did a good job. Teamwork makes the dream work. We're Liberty County proud today, we're Liberty County proud today. All right. Anything else? No, all right. Man, we're going to get a billboard and put you on it.
I was trying to remember, when I started way back in two thousand and two, I want to say our general fund budget wasn't even fourteen million dollars. I think it was twelve million dollars, and we're up to forty-two million dollars now for a general fund budget.
Right.
And a lot, what a lot of people don't know, and we talked about this this morning, is that the county is challenged with state mandates that don't come funded. So many of the services that you are required by law to provide don't come with the funding, whether it's the public defenders program, whether it's probate court or magistrate court. Those are not self-sustaining operations, were never meant to be. So you, counties are different than cities.
Right.
They have a lot more challenges and a lot more funding requirements.
Sir, let me say this to you, thank you for your service, first of all. When Karen mentioned disabled veterans exemption, and you said you received those, what that does to our, is to say our financial pie, that's a pretty big slice of it. But, because we are a veterans-rich community, you know, a lot of veterans like you live here, so it's a blessing. So thank you for investing in our community. So what we need you to do is kind of be an ambassador for the county, as is what we do to support you, sir, and what you do. Thank you for buying six acres, man, you got to spread in many ways. My thing is, so when we have elections for SPOSS and e-SPOSS, you have to support those things. They help make the difference to kind of offset what the exemptions do. The exemptions are due to you, and please, by all means, take advantage of those. But we have to offset that then by some other financial means.
Right.
That's how SPOSS and e-SPOSS and e-commerce, those things come in.
T-SPOSS and SPOSS.
T-SPOSS. So be an ambassador for us, if you will, man, this county needs those things.
Yeah.
I think on that though, we were, my daughter's here, but you have to follow away, she's going to stay now.
Ching ching.
That must be for the school aid.
That's for the school aid.
Sounds like the resignation.
Trying to think of what they call that. I can't even remember the term that they get, that the school boards get for military families.
Is that the impact part of the?
Impact.
Impact fee.
Impact aid.
The impact date that they get.
Chairman, you should remember that one now, yeah?
I should. All right, thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin. Chair, ten motion to close public hearing, go back into regular session?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're now back in the regular session. Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin. Yes, you are.
We've been busy.
Were these both the same, Kim?
Yeah, the one went out electronically.
Yeah, I think one.
One went electronically.
And one puts together a book for you.
Okay.
Yes, she would have given that to Maria to send out to you, or she would have sent it out to you when we got it done.
This is the same, what we were saying, receive electronic?
Correct.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I was, I know I've been requesting that for a little bit. I appreciate it, though.
Yeah, not, we don't have a problem at all submitting it electronically when it's done. We just, because of the way that the dates fall.
Absolutely, yeah.
Sometimes we can't get it to you when your packets go out. So we will always, from now on, send it electronically as well when we get it done. And then we can get with Mr. Brown as to, you know, do you want me on the first or the mid-month meeting, you know, how that's going to roll. But it, everything's focused around the calendar, you know.
Right.
When the first of the month or the end of the month happens, when payroll happens, if there are holidays or weekends, you know, during that first fifteen days of the month. Because our goal is always to be, have the month closed by the fifteenth of the following month. So we are striving now to have the month of September closed by October fifteenth. Now, we've got a holiday in there, and we've also got a weekend, but we've already tried, we've already started our billing process. Of course, we had payroll today, and tomorrow we'll finish up payroll. But that's always our goal, is to close the month by the fifteenth of the following month. And for the amount of funds and the amount of reporting and everything we have to do, I think that's very reasonable for our size, our county, our size. But we will, from now on, as soon as we get it done, we will email it to you. So at the end of August, we've only received about five percent of our budgeted revenues, which is normal. Like I said, sixty percent of our revenues are property taxes, and those come in in about three months timeframe, right after we set the millage. So, and at the end of August, we've spent about twelve percent of our expenditures. So we've only achieved about two point two million in revenues, and we've spent about five million. So kind of living off fund balance right now, and that's usually what happens. These are the lean part of the year. This is the lean part of the year. At the end of August, you had fourteen point four million dollars of undesignated, unreserved fund balance, which is approximately four point two months worth of operational expenditures. This year, this time one year ago, you were at four point five months. Still very good. We're in a real good spot. I imagine, you know, September, October, November, you'll see it decline, and it might even get as low as, you know, three months. For departments, there's a couple of departments that are running slightly ahead of schedule or have some variances. Data processing, they have a lot of maintenance contracts, are paid like right at the first of the fiscal year. So it kind of throws their budget into a negative variance, but over time, that will, that will smooth itself out. And of course, the coastal Georgia regional dues, we pay that one time in a year, so all that gets paid at once. Same with Superior Court, we pay the law clerk upfront at the beginning of the year, so that skews that department. The Sheriff's Department, this year, they went from seven departments to five departments. Well, that took about a month to kind of figure that out. But during that month, we still had all of the people who were originally budgeted in basically thirty-three hundred, that Sheriff's Department charged there. So when we finally got it figured out and separated it and put everybody where they need to go, those people had already been charged to thirty-three hundred. So now that we've had two months' worth of true experience, we can go back and make those adjustments to move some of those expenses out of thirty-three hundred and into those other departments where those employees are now housed. Debt service, we actually made our first, first interest payment on the fire station loan. And that's a semi-annual interest payment, so that's kind of thrown that. And then other financing uses, we had to do an operating transfer out to nine one one. And so that's kind of skewed that budget as well. But I don't expect any of those to be an issue. This is only the second month of the year, so those will smooth out as we go along. Solid waste, a modest income right now of about a hundred and one thousand. They've received about thirteen, almost fourteen percent of their revenues and only spent about eleven percent of their expenditures. And within their departments, there's only one that's running slightly ahead of schedule, but not even five thousand dollars worth. So we don't, we just highlight it, we don't note it, and that's in recyclables. But every other department is operating within their budget. All of your other special revenue funds, your nine one one, your victim witness, child support, record center, they're all operating within their budget as well. Sales tax six still continues to produce wonderful results. We are now two point six million dollars ahead of budget. So if you look at the actual distributions in August, we received over a million dollars again. That's huge. The sales tax just continues to grow. Like I said, our budget for this year was only seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a month. And for the first two months of the year, we've blown that out of the water. So we've received over a million dollars, so we're doing very well in sales tax.
Joey, is that a, just a Liberty County thing? I wonder, is that, statewide?
Statewide, and I think it also has to do with now online sales.
Yeah.
Years ago, they weren't taxing them, and now they're taxing them, and it made a big difference.
One of the blessings of the pandemic is online sales. Wow.
That ain't a blessing.
And T-SPOSS continues to do well too. We received nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars in T-SPOSS. So it's great.
Mr. Brown and Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, not just because he's sitting there, but where are we with the cars now?
Well, it depends on which one. So the heat cars, the heat grant cars were ordered, they have been received, I think they've been ordered though. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, they've been ordered. And then the enterprise orders are in the bank and ordered. They were able to find most of the charger units on hand, enterprise was, and they're scheduled to be at West Chatham Morning Devices, having stuff put in them, and be ready for delivery.
Okay. Last question is, are you coming along with your one ninety-six deal? I won't say anything else.
He'll know better than I.
The one ninety-six.
We're coming along well with that. Everything is moving to plan. We finally got the water and electricity going, and got all the furniture that should be, got it ordered. So we're, we're moving pretty quickly right now. They're going to come in and do an assessment on the vault to make sure everything is good and make sure our lawn system is working. But other than that, everything else is tracking. There's no other issues that we're having. So we appreciate y'all for what y'all did for us.
That's all we want to know. Have a seat, we don't want to ask for no money.
No, I'm not. I'm a money saver. I'm, I'm a money saver.
That's all I have unless somebody.
Joey and I had some casual conversation, you all, about the sale tax that Allenhurst collects and Gum Branch.
That we hold for them.
That we hold. I know Commissioner Gillis, you've been looking at some Allenhurst.
Yeah, Joey gave me a contact. Is he the acting mayor or the?
He's actually Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem.
He's acting, yes.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to get in touch with him to see what, what. I had a few calls from some citizens down.
We don't need to let those funds just sit there and not be used, so.
Gum Branch and Allenhurst are the only two cities that we actually hold their funds for them because they don't have anybody to actively manage those. All the other cities, Hinesville, Waltaville, Midway, and Riceboro, as soon as we get a check, we turn around and disperse their pro-rata share.
And they meet you halfway across the street to pick it up, right?
Knocking on the door.
We'll keep looking at that.
All right.
I need to help with that.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear from him.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
LCPC revised preliminary plat. Colored Habersham Phase 3, Miss Sanchez, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to present the Habersham, colonies at Habersham Phase 3. They revised their preliminary plat to include three more lots at the far end of the subdivision. Trent Long did the design, and this is in District 4. Might go in the wrong direction. There we go. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. So what's outlined in red is the original totality of the original 52 lots in Phase 3. And then you can see the additional lots are right there at the end. This was actually contemplated when they originally came before you, but they hadn't worked out logistics with the adjacent property owners. So now that's all been worked out and they're here to add those additional three lots. Next slide, please. Yeah, that looks better. I thought I'd put a vicinity map on that one. Is this going to work with the remote now? Okay. There we go. Oh, much better. That's what I'm looking for. Yes, so there's the outline of the four, of the original Phase 3 and the three lots over here. This is the overall plat for the, for the extended area. The plat comes in two sheets, so sheet one over here, there are no changes. You recall, not too long ago, preliminary, you final platted eight lots in this area. And this is the area that's affected by the revisions. So these are the eight lots that were final platted in Phase 3A. After this presentation, I'll be presenting the final plat for lot, these eight lots in 3B. And this is just going to quickly flash between the two so you can kind of see the difference. This is the original Phase 2, Phase 3, sorry, second sheet. And then here is the revised one. The old property line came straight down here. This was one big lot on the previous one. They've made it smaller and incorporated this area into one of the lots that's being added. And these are the other two. And the other, other change here is there was a community lot here that's just slightly smaller than what was previously platted. So as I mentioned, there are these changes. The big lot is going from 5.9 acres to 3.6 acres, not a whole, the usable area is not changing because most of what's getting taken away from it is wetlands. And the, the community lot in the corner there is being decreased slightly. But the new lots range in size from just under 22,000 to just under 28,000 square feet. This was before the Planning Commission earlier, last month, and they recommended approval of the revised plat with preliminary, preliminary plat with standard and special conditions. Our standard conditions, and the special condition is the same as it was for the original preliminary plat is, and that is that prior to consideration of the final plat by the Board of Commissioners, documentation shall be submitted from the Liberty County Health Department indicating the development has been approved for onsite septic systems and for wells or service by a privately owned operated, excuse me, community water system. We did receive documentation from the Department of Health indicating that those lots have to be engineered. I'm sorry, that's in phase, that's in the final plat, sorry, not in this one. Getting myself confused here, so this is LCPC's recommendation.
Any questions for Ms. Sanchez? Commissioner Jones is not here, so somebody has to stand in the gap for her tonight.
Yeah, has, has anyone talked to Commissioner Jones? Anyone?
I talked to him the other day, but he didn't act like he was, knew anything about this. It was, I mean, he might have just.
I don't see any.
I mean, the roads is already paved.
Just a matter of revising the.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Our chair entertain one, sir.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion to second, we approve LCPC's recommendation for Habersham Phase 3 revised preliminary plat. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Commissioner Jones, we took care of it.
Okay, so continuing on, as I mentioned, we have a final plat for Phase 3B of this development. It's eight lots on a total of 9.38 acres. This is what I point, I didn't point out the last time, but this is the community water service is, is here, and it supplies this entire development, and it will continue to supply Phase 3. This is Phase 1 that was previous, I'm sorry, Phase 3A that was previously plotted. This is Phase 3B with another eight lots. And this is the plat. What I'd like to point out here is that this is the right-of-way for this, for the road, and it does extend all the way down to the edge of the property line. So it, it starts out, you have at least 60 feet, but it does get wider in this area here. And that is being dedicated to the county.
And that road's already paved. It will be paved, that one there is. Is, is this the one we talked about about a, a couple of months ago?
Yes, sir. Hey, I'm Charles Way, the applicant, nice to see y'all again. So the preliminary plat that, that was just brought before is all of these lots on this road, and we're plating them in eight lot phases because that's how many we're selling at a time. For bonding purposes and that sort of thing, it's just sort of a really cash flow thing. Tonight I have to outlay a bunch of money and wait for them to take the lots down. But we have already paved the road past this phase and all the way to the end of the loop road to the back. So road's paved, electrical is in, streetlights, cable, internet, all the water system is in for all of this stuff already. We're just blocking it up in phases for bonding purposes.
So it's got the, this is the one we talked about to make sure they had the fire hydrant, or that was Josh Wheeler's, wasn't it?
I think so.
Where is it at? Is it in here, too?
I'm not sure who Josh Wheeler is.
It was one of them that we talked about making sure they had the wat, the lines big enough for?
Fire.
Fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants.
This one here will be?
This, this has an eight-inch water main with fire hydrants already installed throughout it.
Okay.
It's already been tested, been chlorinated by the private water provider, and Trent Long has got all that in.
So this would just be HOA? I mean, this would be?
Just to, so you know, the one you were talking about is on Lewis Frasier Road for Josh.
Ah, that's, yeah, that's right.
Lewis Frasier, okay.
That's right.
I got a question.
Well, we have so many now, it's hard to keep up.
I got a question. I heard you say you got an 8-inch line. What size of a pump do you have to keep the pressure up on that line? And what is the pressure on the line at the fire hydrant?
I do not know that. I don't own a water system.
We did.
Technical question.
Yes, I know the answer to that question. We have the pumps, there are two pumps out there, they're both together, they can generate 500 gallons a minute and they keep between 40 and 60 psi on the line all the time.
That would do it.
That system meets the, it meets the requirements of Liberty County.
Now, why are you standing there, Mr. Chairman? You, the roadway.
That's what I was, I'm not.
The roadway.
We did proof roll the roadway. Check all the asphalt. And he has bonded the, the work.
Because you know some issues that I'm dealing with now. So how soon will this be probably deeded over to the county?
In a year. At the end of the warranty period.
Okay.
Well, now the streetlights that's in there, y'all are paying for those out of HOA?
Yes, sir. All the electrical in there is, will be either paid by, by private service or by the HOA.
But now, the subdivisions, we, since it's a HOA, we really and truly don't have to accept those roads if we want to, right? If we don't want to?
That's, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, it would be like going into a.
I, I can keep them and get my, my bond money back.
Yeah, I, I just, I didn't know.
I have about $30,000 out right now.
You what now?
It meets y'all's standards, so I'm, it's okay with me if they're private, but everything else out there is public. I, I don't, I'm not trying to be.
We have been accepting it.
Argumentative about it.
I'll claw.
Making the point, I, I am, I am posting the, the maintenance bonds for them. So our intention is for them to be public, just like the rest of that subdivision.
So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Long, you said you got a bond posted, how much?
$30,000.
I think it's around $21,000 for the sidewalks and the trees to be installed. And then it's about, yeah, $7,000, $8,000 per phase for the roadway.
Now, Mr. Long, and let's say one year after the bond is expired, we have issues, it's going to cost way more than that to refix it, just like a CDA subdivision.
You've got to remember now, this is the maintenance bond, and this is the way your ordinance reads.
I know what they're all going to say, but what I'm saying is what's going to happen afterward, whenever it goes and we got problems.
If you have problems, then yes, it does become something.
It does become back on the whole taxpayers in Liberty County.
Yes. Now, that's the way it is on every road.
Right.
That's the way it is on the roads that we paved, even.
Right.
The ones that we choose.
I'm just asking, just asking a question.
This is, yes, sir, it is a risk that is, is incumbent upon the county, but it is something that is inherent with every road.
Because you know where, where I'm going at, Mr. Chair, because you know, right now, in District 1 alone, right now, I've got seven subdivisions that's not deeded over to the county, and these people are paying taxes. So that these people who don't have a road deeded over to them now, if something happens to that road, they will be paying for the repair on that road.
Yes, sir. So, and so you know, too, and, and I'll diverge just a little bit, and then I'll, I'm going to back away. As a result of the mid-month meeting, we are in the process of putting together a package for you of what it would cost to bring some of these communities up to standard, to get them where they could be accepted and maintained by the road department. So I should have that available to you during the normal mid-month meeting.
Okay.
All right, thanks, sir.
Went out, there's an issue with a road that was not given to the county. That also means that it wasn't inspected by the county.
That's right. It will reflect on the county.
So, so we have, we have had Trent Long, his inspectors, as well as the county inspectors present for proof rolls, inspections of the dirt, the rock, the asphalt, all those things, to make sure that they meet y'all's standards. So based on that, we posted the one-year warranty bond. And if there is an issue with that road at one year, which normally if there is going to be an issue, it will show up because when those houses start getting built, there's going to be dump trucks and low boys and all kinds of stuff on there. If there's something out there, I will need to fix it, or y'all get to keep the money that I posted. So, and that's the, the standard county procedure, as I understand it.
It is.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, one other note, and just to everybody's clear, you, you will be accepting those roads when you accept this final plat. The maintenance bond will continue for a year, just like they're describing, but it, it won't be a year before you start accepting those. It, it's, it's accepted per the plat as a stamp. So it's just the maintenance bond does continue, but it'll actually go on our inventory once completed and once.
All of that's per county ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Every time you come, we learn some more.
HOA thing, then, so like the gentleman said, the lights and all will be, it will never be our responsibility.
Not the lights, no, sir.
Okay. That's good. I mean, that's, that's a good thing. I mean, at least you don't have to, to, you know, if somebody's going to run over them.
Sure.
What about the street signs?
This particular phase doesn't have any street signs, it's all on one.
One, one straight road.
Yes, sir. Now, we do have a street sign in at the intersection in the previous phase, but this one's all on, on block together.
All right, trying to move us on. All right.
If there are no more questions, I will. So this is the final plat, and most of this we've covered. On-site sewer disposal system is all, will be on each lot. I did get a notice from the Department of Public Health indicating that there are three lots there that are so that will have to be engineered just due to the configuration. They're the ones that, that are in the wedges in here. So they'll, for they'll issue a construction permit, the property owner will, he'll have to go and get all the paperwork and have those septic systems designed. And then the sign-off will be required prior to getting the issuance of the permit. The ponds and all the drainage facilities outside of the street right-of-way are the responsibility of the HOA or the property owner, so that won't be anything Liberty County will have to deal with. Liberty County will get, is being dedicated, just that small section of Wilkins Road. Oh, that should say miles, .17 miles, sorry about that. And then that 2.04 acre lot that's in the purple here is all being dedicated to the county as well, that the road runs through. And there are swales on either side of the road. Of course, the drain, that drainage system will be the responsibility of the county. And we've been through this, there are some improvements that aren't done, and they have, Cash Escrow has been set up for, to make sure that they are done, and then a maintenance. And the LCPC staff recommends approval of this final plat for Phase 3B with standard conditions.
All right, now, I think we discussed it thoroughly, everybody's clear. So chair entertain a motion for Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, make that motion that we accept it.
Second.
Motion to second, we accept. Final plat, Colored Habersham Plantation, Phase 3B. All in favor? Raise your right hand, please. Final plat's accepted. Additional use. Solar array, Mr. Gandhi.
Chris, how you doing?
How are you?
Doing all right. All right, so I've only got one item for you tonight, which is a conditional use application. This petition was submitted by Coastal Solar Now on behalf of Mr. Joel Santiago, who's the owner right over here. And he would like to install a roughly 500-square-foot, 9.75-kilowatt ground-mounted solar array at his home at 121 Santiago Lane.
Man, his hands on the street.
Okay, so property's owned in, property's in District 4, zoned AR1, agricultural residential, and parcel 238A99. Pretty simple, here's our sign and legal ad. So here's where we are. This is 17 right here, and this is Friedman Grove Road. If you go past here into the Limerick area, it's going to be like a little dirt path here, and then the home is back in this area. So there's a different home up front here, which you can see a little better here. And this is just like, you know, the, the path to get in that area. So like I said, zoned AR1, like everything around it here, we've got some A1 over here, all agricultural, though. Uh, narrative, uh, Coastal Solar Power will be designing and installing a nine-point-seven-five kilowatt ground-mounted solar array system at the request of Joel Santiago at the following address. Mr. Santiago would like a solar system for his home to improve the environment and cut energy costs for his home. Uh, so this is the same, uh, agreed upon, uh, what am I trying to say? Uh, this is, this is directly from the ordinance, uh, about complying with the, you know, federal, state, local laws and regulations, uh, as far as the decommissioning plan, and of course, uh, earlier this year, we had that other solar panel come in and, uh, uh, Joey and I drew up that, uh, affidavit there that I placed a copy of on your desk. Mr. Santiago has already signed it, so hopefully we should be okay on that front. And, uh, I think that's, oh, the diagram, yeah. So roughly forty-four feet by eleven feet, gonna be about two panels deep like that. This is roughly what the frame will look like, uh, just with the panels on it. Uh, conditional use considerations. Uh, application, approval of the conditional use shall not adversely affect economic values. Uh, it would not. Uh, the physical and environmental effects of allowing the conditional use shall be considered. Uh, we said there'd be no physical or environmental detriment. Buffer zones where necessary to shield any adverse factor shall be considered. Uh, we have a special condition. We're recommending a fifteen-foot buffer around the property, uh, vegetative buffer. Uh, and additional space for parking and landscaping and building to be considered, none needed. So we are, uh, recommending approval with, like I said, standard and special conditions with our, one special condition being that the applicant shall place or preserve a fifteen-foot vegetative buffer around the energy system. And if y'all have any questions, I can answer them, and, uh, Mr. Santiago's also available for any questions.
Any questions on Coastal Solar project? Have solar power at his home? I think he had a six-acre plot. Okay, so he has plenty of space to do it, and requiring the buffer around it, so not exposed. Alright, and then, so that satisfies any concerns I have, commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, any, anything you could do to help, uh, save the environment, especially nowadays, I mean, I'm a hundred and ten percent.
Chair entertain a motion then.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Motion to second, we approve the conditional use. Mrs. Santiago, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Alright, motion's approved.
Alright, thank you, commissioners. You have a good night.
Sir, yeah. Still gonna put you on the billboard. Man, put you on our Facebook page and everything. Thank you. Alright, South Side Park, let's go over to the, I call that the West Side, so Airport Road, not the West Side?
What do you wanna call it, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
They call it the West Side.
Commissioner Jenkins, good to have you, Mr. Simon. Good to have you guys.
Want to say greetings to, uh, county commissioners.
Yeah, I made him commissioner, I just put.
My city, uh, my county commissioner, thank you, uh, for inviting us here to come and share our venture. I think this is a new part that we trying to put in. Uh, just to give you a quick history on, um, where we at. And then after I do that, I'm gonna hear Paul Simon, Mr. Simon to come up, and he's gonna go over the outline, just the part that we trying to do. Uh, back in nineteen, let's take a little fall back, two thousand and eight. Uh, myself and Mr. Frazier, uh, city councilman, we had a discussion about things that we need to do to enhance the, um, the, uh, area in, in, on the, you said the West Side?
I know, that's what I said.
You say West Side.
Cause I think you got me confused, uh, Mr. Chairman, you not calling it four, five different things. The West Side.
Yeah.
Uh, and one of the things he thought about, he said, we need to have some recreation there. We need an apartment, we need something for that side of town. So I had the opportunity to go and talk to my county commissioner. And when I talked to my county commissioner, she said, that's a wonderful idea. She said she always thought about doing something in that area, and a park would be a wonderful thing to do. So from that point, I started working towards trying to see exactly where we can put this particular park at. We did look at several different areas as we continued to move forward. One of them, I think, was the old dump area. And that's where we sort of kind of started off at. But after looking at it for a couple of, probably about a year or so, I looked at it and realized it's gonna cost us more money than I have to put into that park. And by the time we get done upgrading the park, I will be out of money. So, uh, uh, got in touch with, uh, Paul Cribs and negotiated with Paul Cribs to see, can we utilize that piece of property where he helped the tenant over there? When he told, when I talked to him, he told me he'd do whatever he can do to get us some land, cause he wanted to see a park on that side as well. But one of the things, initial things he told me at first, he said, well, can y'all name the park after me? I said, ah, I don't know about that. It's gonna work. But, uh, so, uh, moving on, he gave us the park, but then he kind of reneged on it just a little bit. He said he'd give us half of the land that we was asking for. So I had to go back to him and ask him, told him that we need all the land, we, if we can, can we get all the land? So we end up getting that piece of land from him. So, just to bring you kind of up to date of where we at, we have developed a plan and, and sketched out a, uh, is Paul, is that a blueprint now? We call it a blueprint? Can we call it a blueprint now? I'm saying we can call it a blueprint, right?
Yes.
We have a blueprint, let me take this, so we have a blueprint that we put together. And I came by and I made sure I wanted to run that across my county commissioner, which is, uh, Connie Thrift. And we sat down along with the chairman and we looked at the park and stuff. I wanted to do that before I presented this, uh, uh, blueprint to the commissioners. We realized that we only have seven-hundred thousand dollars. That's all I have put aside for that park. It's gonna take more than seven-hundred thousand dollars to build that park. When you look at this on layout, you'll see exactly why we say it's gonna cost us more money to, uh, actually put this apart, uh, together. So, uh, what we doing today, we wanna present this sketch, should I say, this blueprint to the county, let y'all look over it. But you know, at the conclusion, I'm gonna be asking y'all, would y'all please self-support us money-wise, you know, during the rest of this apart? Very important that we do this apart, and I think it's, it's needed on this side of the town, but once you see the layout, you'll see it's a, there's gonna be a very unique, park that we're trying to, we're gonna put something that's gonna be there, and it's gonna be recognized. I'm saying it's probably gonna be the best park that we have in Liberty County, but I leave that up to you. I'm asking Paul to come up and help Paul.
Yo, they already answered their question there, Mr. Chairman. They said they was needing the money. They got two Pauls. They got Simonton and Cribs. They don't need the money from us.
Uh, Mr. Walden, is, is that?
Eddie, Mr. Walden's my dad.
Eddie, is, is, is that a pair of aces or a pair of deuces?
That's aces right there, buddy, I can tell you.
One of them is a joker.
And a Miss what?
A joker.
That's the other one though, right?
Oh, we're gonna let you talk that for a second, cause evidently he didn't get that.
Okay. Alright, so as, as Keith just said, basically we looked for several places on the, um, to put this park. And, and when, when Mr. Cribs did donate the land, it was, it was a, uh, it was a great, great thing for the city. And if many of you know, about fifteen years ago, basically he built two, four clay courts out on the piece of property on Airport Road. Those clay, four clay courts now are on the property that's been dedicated. Uh, and when, when the plan gets up here, I assume that we're waiting on something? When the plan gets up here, I'm gonna show you, but basically, as anybody that's played on the clay courts, it's, it's very labor-intensive to keep those maintained. So we're, we're not gonna stay with the clay courts. We're gonna basically convert two of those courts to hard courts, and then convert the other two courts to basketball courts, so that we can get a little bit of diversity into the neighborhood on, in people, uh, that use the courts out there. And I've got, uh, a site plan here that Mr. Jenkins called the blueprint. There's not blue anymore, but it's, it's, everybody knows what you're talking about when you say the blueprint.
You said it was how many years ago he built those courts?
It was about fifteen years ago.
How long you been here?
How long what?
How long have you been here?
Uh, came here night, well, you mean when I visited or when I moved here?
No, when you moved here.
When I moved here, it was nineteen eighty.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, and then we played on the tennis court at the country club for a while. And, and then they were in such bad shape, Cribs decided to just build us some really nice courts, and that was about, um...
Twenty years ago.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. You're right, twenty.
Your point you gonna tell your age.
We, we supposed to use our imagination on this?
Uh, well, I, I, I don't know.
I know what tennis courts looks like, cause we've already.
We was trying to find the, uh, slide.
Yeah, join in and get the slide. We don't have it. Give him just a few minutes.
I, I can just see it.
Yes.
Had to be. Yeah.
That could date us all.
I knew you was a little bit, I mean, I, you know, John J. Hart, that was years ago, okay?
That was a long time ago.
Yeah. And I remember Jimmy because my wife taught him, so you, this may not, this blueprint may not be blue.
That's nice.
Well, I can see it plum good.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna go closer. Okay, so. Little guy right there. Okay, that's good. Alright, here are the four tennis courts that were built somewhere around thirty years ago. Some were around thirty years ago. Now, when they were built, these were, um, clay courts, all four of them, and there was actually a building in the middle. Uh, there was a bathroom. So what we, and, and the property that, that is, that was dedicated to the city, it's about four acres, I think. So it's a pretty good-sized piece of property. So basically, we're gonna take and rehab these courts to the point where we're gonna change it to a hard surface, get rid of the clay. And then on this side, we're gonna have tennis courts, I mean, uh, basketball courts, full courts, so we have two of those. We'll, we'll have, uh, parking on the front and in the rear on the thing, so that this basically parking in this area would be more for the use here. We have a batting cage back here and a, uh, a playground. And what we've done is tried to, to kind of spread the activities across the site, cause we have one playground here and then another one over here at the pavilion. That we got planned for there. So just a, an overall look at this, basically, uh, the, uh, parking lot in the back, there's, uh, the batting cage here and tennis court, I mean, uh, playground. And then, yeah, this is just open air. Is, is there something right up in here? Okay, no, that's just the walkway. Walkway and this path basically goes all the way around. It's about two thousand feet. So it's about not a half a mile, more than a quarter, but not a half. And then there's playground there, then, uh, there's a new restroom building up here. It'd be very similar to the one that we're building at, uh, Radble, Radble Park right there. So and then, and then basically the parking lot here, there's a multi-use field here. Now, these, these are not soccer fi- sized fields. They're more, they're, this one over here may be close to a junior soccer, but they're more like for just activities. Pick-up ball games or, or of any kind. Then, um, then we have skate park up in this area. And then, as I was going through this, I got a call from one of the residents out here, and she said, hey, are you putting a dog park in there? I said, no, there's already a dog park at Bryant Commons, so we're not putting one there. And she said, you realize how far Bryant Commons is from my house? Good point. And so we, we did manage to put a dog park in the back over here, so that we have some activity there. And, and that's pretty much the, uh, the plan. We are rehabbing the, um, the lights that are on, around the tennis court. And then we have just, uh, the, uh, the lighting in the parking lot in there to make it secure. One question I did get, uh, previously was, are you putting a fence all around it? At this point, there is not a fence planned to enclose the entire site, so that you can, you know, right now, on some of the parks, they go out and they lock the gates and do that. You know, it can be gated, but look up here and there, but right now it does not have a fence planned for around the entire site.
Paul, the, you, the, that's, uh, you got the dog park at the bottom, and there, those two, what's that, uh, soccer fields or football fields?
These fields.
What is that?
Those are multi-use fields.
Oh, okay.
They're not, they're not regulation size for, for a football field, not even regulation size for an organized soccer.
Okay.
And, and.
Just opens, just open spaces.
Green space.
Like full-size park years ago, I didn't play.
That's right, yes.
Yeah, that's what I.
Organized sports or anything.
Okay. And at the bottom?
That's right.
Yeah, what is that? Skate park.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the one on, um...
Eighty-four?
No, the one, uh, one ninety-six at the, uh, the, the, the recreation area there, that's at the end of Sharon Elaine Street.
Irene Tombe Thomas.
It's a skate park out there?
There, there is a skate park.
It's, it's really small.
It's, whoops, did I do that?
Like, really, really small. But a skate park?
Yeah, this, that, that skate park.
It's really, really small.
So this one, this one is must be for beginners.
It's, it's just.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Um, and we've, we've been discussing this, uh, on the Miller Park. Is there a D cell lane on that road?
Uh, yes, sir. There, there is. You see right here, this basically, and if you zoom back out here, there is a D cell lane for this drive here. So our drive at this point is, is in that D cell lane. The taper's back here, the drive is in the D cell lane. Now, there's no left turns out of here.
So is there a turn lane on, uh, Airport Road?
Yeah, this is Airport Road right here.
Right, but I mean, is there, let's just say you're coming from one ninety-six. To get in there, is there a turn lane to go into it?
You, yes, right here, there is one into this drive right here.
Okay.
So there's a D cell lane and a left turn access going.
Not into it.
And, and then the good, what, what we may end up having to do is, if you go out there and look, there's really not room for the U-turn there. You know, in most of them, there's, there's a little, for the U-turn.
Mm-hmm.
You may have to add that in there, uh, to, to get, uh, a U-turn for anything larger than just a car.
Well, you know, I, the, it's straight across then from the old dump.
The dump, dump is, alright, so this, Paul Cribs rental unit, rental office is right there. Okay, and then he had this building here, and his old office is about here.
Right.
And, and the dump is just down from just a little further away.
So there's no, I, I'm, and what I'm thinking about is the dog park that you're alluding to, um, if you had, what would that do if it was a, if the dog park was across one ninety-six, I mean, uh, Airport Road? In a separate area than where the kids are at, or the?
Uh, well, let me tell you this. I don't think the lady that called me cares where the dog park is out there, as long as it's somewhere close to where she is.
Well, I mean, you know, I just, I don't, my wife's got dogs, and she goes to this one out here, but I just wonder.
I mean, y'all have dogs.
If you had it across the road from the park, would that be a negative thing, or would that be a positive thing? I'm just saying the dogs would be away from...
From the children.
Well, and not necessarily to say that children's gonna be the only ones out there, but I'm just asking, um,
What then?
That would make, that might fix it to where you could have a full field. You know what I'm saying? A full, a, a regulation-sized soccer field.
I don't know that we wanted it to be full-size. We wanted more of a green space.
And, and.
Just for the, you know.
Basically, the input that was given to us was that they don't wanna have organized sports.
Sports there, on that.
This is just.
So it won't be for the rec department. It'll be strictly a City of Hinesville.
King County.
King County.
Well, I mean, once you open it up, everybody's gonna go, is the reason why I'm asking.
Yeah, everybody will go.
But they won't sched, they won't schedule.
That's right.
Activities there.
So it won't be no league games.
No.
If you wanna take your grandkids out there and.
Run and jump.
You don't have to worry about.
Kickball or whatever.
Frisbee.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's right.
What about just some green space?
That's green space.
That's what he's talking about. That's what he's talking about, and I, I thought the dog park is here in this corner.
It's right here.
Right here.
Okay.
It'd be fenced in.
It is fenced in, so.
Talk about the exercise stations on the park.
I was waiting on that.
Exercise stations, uh, here, here, and then, and then, we're actually modifying this a little bit to, to, to get a little more. See this straight walk, does, is, give it a little more character, maybe weave it in and out a little bit, and then we got the exercise stations here, here.
Along the way.
And as you go all, all the way around, they're not on the front part, in this area, but there's exercise stations, I think there's about eight of them along the trail.
I see those in Atlanta parks.
Yep, yep.
And then, yeah, and then.
A lot of green space.
Low cities parks, green space.
Kinda put back there on purpose.
Well, that's what I figured, that's why I was wondering, you was wanting it out of the way, and I was thinking, maybe able to utilize that other one across the road, but if not, that's fine, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna rain on nobody's parade, I was just wondering if anybody had thought about it.
Very comprehensive.
Very nice.
Yeah, y'all go ahead and build it, and let us, just send us to build, and we'll. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll put in what we can.
Okay, now, so, what, what, what is fixing?
I think what it costs is too much mu- too much money, way more money to take it and move it from where we got it at now, place it on the other side, uh, and we just don't have the funds to do it, but we just figured that'd be the best place to put it, because we start talking about recreation, we wanna try to keep the family together as a whole, if the dogs is playing, they may have the kids out there on the, um, in the playground playing at the same time, so they can monitor them at the same, at the same time, if they got a, uh, some type of get-together going on out there as far as a family reunion or something, they'll be able to use both fields along with the dog park and any other type of recreations that the park provides, uh, to support their, their activities. So that's why we didn't wanna put it on, and we just didn't wanna tie the money up into it, so we figure, every penny that we get, and we got, we can just tie it into making this area something yet, unique, but however, in the future, if you want us to build us, leave us up on that side of the, we'd be more than happy to do it, so.
Paul, the, uh, the, the batting cage, I mean, so is, is that gonna be, uh, Joey, what kind of batting cage, what, what, would that be? Do, do you know, you don't know, would, I mean, would somebody have to be there, like, uh, to take a team out there to, um, to operate it, or just? I mean, it ju- it just can't, you can't have a batting cage that's just open, like the field would be open.
It's actually, it's, thi- this is actually a pre, they, basically, you order them off internet, they come out there and they're fully enclosed. Now, it doesn't have one of those pitch machines to you, basically, what.
Oh, oh, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
You, you've got somebody, he's got, person in there with him has a screen, but they're throwing.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Manual.
Put one in there with pitch machine that we.
No, I, I looked at that total price right there, so I, I, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with it.
That number goes up a bunch.
Yeah, yeah, if you do that, well, and, and it would have to be, um, monitored as well.
So, let me, let me tell you then, I, I was gonna say this before it flashed up there, anybody that tries to estimate construction cost in the day market, I think, is, is just kinda shooting from the hip.
Okay.
I've done some estimates in the last few months, and sometimes I'm way high, and sometimes I'm way low, and it just, you know, it's all over the place. I did the estimate on this project last, yeah, one point one million, I did, we did the design on it, we got the information from contractors, every single contractor I called, I said, so if I estimated a project in last spring, how much should I add to it now? And it would, it ranged anywhere from ten to fifty percent, depending on who you were talking to and what kind of project it was, so, at this point, basically, we've got a, a budget of one point four million dollars to do the project, now, that may come in at one point one million dollars by the time we get to it. The one thing, can you go back to the site plan? The one thing we are going, or at least my plan is, you see, uh, if you. Make it smaller, there you go, okay, most everything in this site is site work. The only thing that is not is the bathroom and the pavilion, so, what we plan to do is put out a bid package for site work without the bathroom and the, uh, pavilion in it, so that we can build that, maybe leave just the base course and the parking lot, so the contractor has something to work off of, and then bid the buildings and the pavement at a, at a later date to finish, the reason why is, every, every project that we bid, where there's a general contractor and site contractor, basically, the site contractor's pricing it, the general contractor's adding his own to it, and so, it just ends up costing you more, so we're gonna do the site work, which will include, you know, the basic parking lot, the basin paving, curving gutter, the sidewalks, the renovation of these two fields here, and these fields, and then, uh, the dog park and the skate park, so we can get all that, the utilities, the irrigation, the water and sewer service, and get all that set up, and then, we'll come back and do the pavilion and the bathroom just from a building contractor in the future.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I got a question on a different level, uh, did you say that this is gonna be a county-city project? Either one, who can answer it?
It's gonna be a, I mean, I look at anything in a city, it's gonna be considered a city slash county, uh, project, and I'm coming to my commissioners, and as for supporting this project, so we are in a, being a city-county, uh, project, yes, sir.
Let me say this to you, we've been fighting with a park, one of the oldest parks in Liberty County, out on the main corridor, I think this whole board of commissioners is aware of it. Miller Park, uh, for twenty-something years, right now, we have another project park that's in front of us, we have not completed that, Miller Park is not even started yet, and I'm gonna be straight up with you, good concept, but I'm not forgiving another penny of county money to any other park, until Miller Park is completed.
Commissioner, if I can say this, uh, I'm coming in with some money.
I don't care, I don't care what you're coming in with, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I don't care what you're coming in with, that's just my thought to this board of commissioners, cause I'm sick and darn tired, every time I turn around, we start saving up for Miller Park, and we start looking at another park.
Mitch, Miss Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, the chairman and I met with the councilman, and, uh, to review this, and, and then he went out and got the property, um, so, you know, it was something that I wanted him to come and present, and hoping that I may be able to help him with some of my splotch funds, and maybe the, the chairman will be able to chip in some and help with this project.
So what's gonna happen to, Miller Park again is gonna get.
Well, I, I don't know that we, we were looking at taking any from the recreation funds, you know, I think it was more of. More of the funds from District Three, and possibly some of the funds from the chairman.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We, y- y- you know the plans we had for Miller Park.
Miller Park mostly been.
We gonna chip in, so this, this is nothing that, we're not taking funds from Miller Park to, to do.
But I thought we were trying to at least get Miller Park to a certain stage.
We didn't, we're not in a race. Gets done first, no, he just happened to, and he has what, seven hundred thousand dollars to, to, from the city to put the water on.
Plus a, plus a piece of property that's worth over seven hundred thousand dollars.
A little over seven hundred thousand.
Mr. Chairman, uh.
And he's been looking for a while.
It was given to us, uh, as a, it belongs to the city.
I beg your pardon?
He donated to the city, yes.
So all of that property was donated, so, basically, what you're looking at is your one points, how much, one point four? And, um, infrastructure.
He's got half of that.
You got half the money?
We got half the money, and also, my, we talked to, I talked to both, uh, the chairman and my commissioner, and we said, if we have to get, go back, and I talked to Kenneth about it again today, I mean, we have to phase it in, we'll do that, but we wanna, we wanna move forward with this project, uh, uh, move forward, and I do understand, Commissioner, your concerns about, uh, Miller Park, you know, and I love to see.
Really do.
I love to see something happen out there in Miller Park, but that's way beyond my, my, uh, what I'm here for, uh, but I, this is a project, like I say, that I started off asking for money back in, uh, two thousand and eight, and we had splotch money and stuff donated to this piece of property and stuff, and I just wanna make sure that we use every penny that we have and give it back to the citizens who's paying it, uh, and the outside folks who come in there, and move on with this project and stuff, uh, but the most important part is, we got that piece of property, and if that property donated to us, I think we need to make use of it, and I need to take what I got, and I need to go ahead and start moving forward, uh, one of the things Mr. Howard asked me to do to make sure I relate to you, to you, is, which is, we going to take it before the city, uh, not this council meeting, but the next council meeting, and so we can see if we can go ahead and put it out for bids, uh, and so we're going to get, uh, find out exactly what it's gonna take, uh, what type of bids we got coming in, and if this body want us to bring them bids back to you, I don't have a problem, but I wanna make sure that the county commissioners, and I got the approval of the county commissioners, to continue to move forward on this, on this particular project.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, um, uh, Commissioner Stevens, we, the last thing that we're gonna do is take away from.
Yeah.
Miller Park, I mean, that's, that's a.
I just wanna make sure that's.
No, that, that's, that's, that's our priority, but, um, this, this, this project is, um.
Times harder than you, you know.
This, this project will enhance the, the west, the west side of the city, um, and the city and the county have, uh, worked together on, on parks before, uh, Irene Thomas Park, a name after Justin's grandmother, or great-grandmother.
Great-grandmother.
Um, that's a city-county, um, venture, um, I think the, the county maintains it, it's in the city. Uh, I think you have to go through the county to, um, to rent the pavilion, but it, but it's in the city, and, um, every night at, I think, eight o'clock or ten o'clock, depending on the time of the year, the city locks it up, and the city unlocks it, so, um, the city and the county has worked together on, um, recreation before, and I think, um, with your help and, um, Commissioner Thrift's help, and the help of the city council and the county commission, this would be another great venture, and it, it'd do something on that side of town, um, you know, for the, the lady, um, to tell Paul how far it is from her house to Bryant Commons, and when you look at all the development out Fifteenth Street, from Gate Seven, all up Airport Road and Pine Ridge and Stonehenge and Griffin Park, uh, that whole side of town, I mean, that's, um, that puts, um, a facility like this on that side of town, that would be supported by both local governments, I think it's a great thing. But we're, we're not gonna, um, you know, uh, ignore what needs to be done at Miller Park, because we, we, we're definitely gonna do that.
And if I could say closing, I definitely, I know the city and the county has a wonderful, I know since I've been in office, we have a great working relationship, we come together, we do things together, and it's for the betterment of the citizens of, uh.
Understand that, and I agree with what you're saying.
And, uh, so, and we all are in the county, we all have a love for the county, although we are the city, but we are the county, cause we in the county and stuff, so, uh, I think we'll still be putting the money, um, back into the county as a whole, and with the folks, it's like, like, Commissioner, you know, it, we're growing, the population is growing, and we getting probably crowded in Hinesville, but, um, I think the, the people on that side of town, I think they do deserve, uh, something, uh, cause we do have a large amount of money coming through, coming in, even doing, we start talking about our tax funds and stuff as well, so we do pay a big portion of it as well.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I heard what Councilman Jenkins just said, that they deserve, the people on the east end deserve the same thing, Miller Park.
Miller Park is happening.
Miller Park land was donated also, twenty-five acres out there, was donated. So it's no different in donation and donation, people is people, they deserve the same thing as the people over here deserve. Just, uh, all I'm saying is, Miller Park was out there on the front burner, years ago, before this was even thought of. I'm not saying we don't support it, same as you can stand there and ask, and support what you want, I can do the same thing sitting from this right here, for the people on that end, off of Liberty County.
Mr. Chairman, I, I remember when it was a dirt road, uh, years ago, and I, probably some of the other folks do. I think you would remember when Airport Road was a dirt road, and there was nothing out there, I remember, I remember when Mr. Krebs came here and, and, uh, got out there, I think you picked a good site, um, and it sounds like, Paul, you ready to start, basically, in thirty days and turning dirt, if you could, if you could get it?
We ready to go to bid in about two weeks.
Well, um, and, and I'll tell you, I, I committed some money to.
Miller Park.
To, to Miller Park, to Mr. Stevens, and, and that's not even in my district.
And I appreciate it.
But I'm gonna say something, there ain't nothing here ours, when we all leave from here, it's gonna be somebody else's. And I'll tell you, I'll, I'll upfront two hundred thousand dollars out of my sales tax money, if, uh, Commissioner Thrift will fix another state like she fixed today, I'll, uh, get me to vote for it, that's, no. No, but I'm serious, I'll, um, him, if you would, if you take, um, some money, and, um, I'll be the first one to extend the olive branch, but I do know how long it's been on Miller Park. Um, it's been nearly one solid year since we made arrangements to do that, and I'll, uh, I'll tell you that, in time, we're gonna do it, but.
It's coming.
We, we gonna, we gonna do that, I do, uh, appreciate Mr. Krebs donating the property.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's some things that, you know, I, I, I look at is what you take off the tax digest when you, when you get property like that, um, that's one reason why I was mentioning something about uh, having a dog park across the road, Paul, I mean, that's already off the tax digest, it belongs to Liberty County, so, uh, we could utilize that for something, that may be in the future, but I would like to, to say that I, Commissioner Gillen and I had talked about it one time last year in Raiden, that there needs to be something out, out on that end. You've got one place in Gum Branch, and that's it, and I can tell you, the Gum Branch Park is kinda like the Miller Park. Twenty years, maybe, I, I know it's been longer than that, twenty-five years, and it's still got old wood poles up there, um, but I, I was very involved in the rec department before, and I'm not anymore, but I do think it's important uh, to keep them out of that man's jail right there, so, we'll, uh, accept that if you would.
Thank you for your support, sir. Hey, you picked up a little bit. You're getting there. Talking to this gentleman right here.
He's got it. Ain't them speed humps up?
Thank you, Keith, we gotta move on, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where, where will we go next?
He's gonna.
Wanna contribute also, so when will we need, at the next meeting?
Well, you can, and the other thing, and I hate to bring this up, but Miller Park, we discounted the bid on, I remember it was one point two million dollars, you really hadn't come up, other than Commissioner Walden's commitment of two hundred and fifty to that project, you really hadn't come up with a commitment for what it's gonna take for Miller, it goes back out to bid, it's being ready for bid right now.
Believe you.
We, we will, when, when, when they get the numbers.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I understand.
Do you have that?
Running some stuff here about how much people got left in their district money, so, yeah, you just need to.
Joey, is that number wrong? It's two hundred thousand for the park and fifty for ADA, right?
Uh, okay, I didn't look at the bottom down there, but it would be right, so other, but my point is, other than your commitment to the project, Miller Park is an unfunded project by the board.
Other than what?
It will, uh, other than what Eddie's contributed, there are no other funds available for Miller, other than what you might contribute out of your district.
I'm gonna give the Miller Park to you, we just waiting on your numbers.
We are, and I, yeah, my suggestion would be, we take a look at your district numbers, along with the rebid number, uh, come up with what you wanna do on Miller Park, if that is your priority, and then, see what you've got left in your district funds that you can contribute, so, some are, some have more than others.
Mm-hmm, we know.
I, I didn't know, I thought Miller Park maybe was gonna be funded by the rec.
No, ma'am, the rec, the rec, the rec funds were completely exhausted. No, ma'am, the rec, the rec, the rec funds were completely exhausted, out of splash, if you remember, and so the board was gonna make a commitment at some level to fund Miller Park once it came.
We, we, we will.
Right, we, we'll figure it out, but, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to get in the weeds, but I, I remember.
We got, we got enough.
Through the discussion with, uh, the park in, in the fourth district, in the different phases, initially we're supposed to do one phase, and I remember, I was the one up here talking about Miller Park, and why are we going to phase two and three of that park, not Miller Park, but we'll talk about it later, I mean, that, that's not what, what, what they're here for, so I'm, I'm gonna get back to that, that's a really nice park, I like it, uh, I would like to see a little bit more green space, and then also, if you can relay the message to, uh, Cribs, we appreciate that, because that west side, you know, uh, it's been developing on, on, on that end, end of the, the county for quite a while now, and like you said, the only part we really do have out there is in Gum Branch, and with all the respect, you know, people from Airport Road aren't gonna travel farther out, they're, they might travel farther in, but not farther out, but I, I do like the concept, like I said, you know, I wish it was just more space.
And they're still, go ahead, they're still.
But, but really, if it was more space, I would love to see a family entertainment center right there, too.
Oh, gosh, a lot more space.
I mean.
Well, there's still.
If he's talking about Miller Park, I don't talk about the family entertainment, baby.
They got one of them out there at the Shell Station right by the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's safe for me to say that I do have the consensus that we can move forward and, and, uh, you guys gonna support us.
Yes, the city project, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, uh, and one, one more thing, uh, uh, I've, I've had a conversation with, with a council, uh, councilman, that we share a particular portion of, of the district together, uh, matter of fact, we, we bumped the line that, that road as well, Alavoke, and.
So, so let me tell you, and, uh, I had, I had a layout and everything looked really good, but my background areas were horrible, uh, I managed to get them from Trent to the good areas, but you, you'll see that concept in, whenever I get back on your agenda.
Okay, yeah, 'cause Councilman Riles has been calling me about that, 'cause we.
So, but I've got that concept done, and then, and it'll, it'll be back before you, before two months.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
All right, uh, marijuana ordinance, Commissioner Frazier's name here, I, I thought my county attorney, you, that's, that's who you're trying to get?
He didn't answer? Oh, Lord, nah, I'm joking.
Go, Kelly.
What's wrong?
Oh, I'm, I'm not worried, I, I, I just, I just like having my legal representation with me.
You wanna do lead in, sir?
Hello? He's there?
Yeah.
All right, uh.
Yep, I'm here.
How you doing, Kelly, uh, it's Justin, I didn't know if you wanted me to talk first or you, uh, uh, we, we do have an early Christmas present, uh, we do have a sheriff present here as well, so, uh, I, I don't know if, if we're gonna still talk about it now, or you wanna just move on to, to the next agenda item?
Um, you, you wanna talk about the, um, the retail economic development effort first, or?
Whichever way you, you wanna handle it, uh, actually, on the agenda, we, we have the marijuana, but I would love it to be changed to cannabis ordinance, sounds a little bit better, if, if you ask me.
Well, I, I know that the board had considered the misdemeanor marijuana ordinance earlier, and, you know, since that time, there have been several other jurisdictions who've passed comparable ordinances, I think the latest one being the city of Tybee, and so I think Commissioner Frazier thought it might be appropriate to reconsider the issue, and I'm, my understanding is that we're probably gonna wait until mid-month or, or the next regular meeting, whatever can be on the agenda, so that, uh, we can have a, you know, a, a full presentation to, to inform the board as to which jurisdictions have passed similar ordinances and the benefits of them, as well as the disadvantages that we discussed earlier, and so, I'm not sure if you wanna proceed that way, but I, I, I was, my understanding, that's how we'd proceed, and I know that we had the sheriff who's here today, and he might be willing to comment on it, but if not, I thought he might wanna weigh in and give law enforcement's perspective at the, the meeting when it's addressed more fully, whether it's the next mid-month, the next regular meeting.
Y'all's call, you'll move it?
No, but I'll, I'll defer to you, Commissioner Frazier, however you wanna proceed, I'm fine.
I will, uh, if, if the chairman will allow us to, to move it, to give us some.
Apologize to the sheriff.
To get some more information, but, I mean, but, but since the sheriff is here, I mean, if, if he would wanna, you know, I mean, the mic is open if you wanna say anything about it.
You don't have to, Sheriff.
You don't have to, but more importantly, uh, I, I, I do wanna say that this isn't, this is more of a decriminalization and not legalization, and there is a, there is a, a difference where we're looking at it, and I, I know from, from my point of view, and from my perception of it, is, uh, criminal justice reform has always been very close to me, uh, you know, from the federal level to state level, and I think this is one of a few things that we have the opportunity to, to be a part of, to, to help change the, uh, how criminal justice is looked at, you know, uh, because there, there are, everyone has made a mistake in their life before, you know, and I, I would just hate for, for someone to ha- have their whole life altered because of, of a, of a mistake that they made early, you know, a, a college student not be able to receive financial aid, or, you know, a, a young person not be able to, to get a job because of, of, of a load of blemish on, on their record, so I would just love for, uh, everyone up here to have an open mind about it, and we will get some more information to, to y'all, so we could discuss it a little bit more in depth later.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, I don't know what information that we're looking for, but I, when I saw this on the agenda, I, I went online, and there are a hundred and, uh, five hundred and seventy-two cities in Georgia, a hundred and fifty-nine counties in Georgia, and so far in the state of Georgia, as close as Tybee, as the attorney said, and Savannah and Statesboro that have these marijuana ordinances, but that's a total of twelve cities and counties, you know, so it's not running rapid throughout the whole state of Georgia, if you got five hundred and seventy-two cities, a hundred and fifty-nine counties, and a total of twelve cities and counties, that's, uh, that has some kind of ordinance that, um, decriminalizes, um, possession of marijuana, and, uh, as for young men or women making mistakes, um, I know that, um, your criminal record is, um, reviewed when you go and looking for a job, and, you know, that could show up on there, but the person that, um, possesses marijuana less than an ounce or, or whatever that, um, that amount would be, um, he purchases that under the cover of darkness, I mean, you can't buy it in Walmart next to a six-pack of beer, you can't buy it anywhere legally, you know, so you're breaking the law when you got that less than an ounce in your pocket, you know, so it's still against the law, and I talked with our, um, state representative, and, um, it's not being talked about under the gold dome.
It is being talked about.
Well, I, 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 I.
With all the respect, I, I know, I know a little bit more than just our, our state representative, I, I know.
Good Lord.
Legislative Black Caucus, and actually, I can present.
I would like this, if I could.
Right.
Um, but when I talked with Al, is who I talked with, he said that, um, there's been no talk about it, um, when I, when I mentioned it to him, and I'm not here to, to argue the point, I'm just here to say that it's, um, that it is against the law in the state of Georgia, and when they vote on it under the gold dome, and it's not against the law, then it won't be against the law here in Heinzville, Georgia, or Liberty County, that's just my thought on it, but if it's something that we wanna talk about at the next meeting, or whenever that time comes, um, we can, but, um, I think they were saying that we needed more information, and, um, I went on Google today, and that's the information that I have, twelve out of all of these cities and out of all of these counties, that's, that's what the number is, um, that I found today.
Mr. Chair. So are, are you telling me that it's, it's twelve cities?
I'm not telling you anything, I, I, I'm not telling you anything.
Okay, I, I was just, I was just trying to figure out the, the purpose of, of throwing up the twelve out of the five.
Well, uh, because you said you needed more information, didn't you?
No, I don't need any more information.
Okay.
What, what I was saying was, to give a, a, a great presentation, we would love to have a little bit more time.
Well, I thought a great presentation was once it was on the agenda.
Okay.
Commissioner?
I'm, I'm gonna.
Uh, Commissioner Gillen, make, I'll make sure I hear you correctly, you said that you, out of all these cities and counties, there's only twelve that is jointly uniformed together?
Oswald is one.
No, it, it was, um, it was a list online, and I think it said, um, South Fulton, well, you, you could look.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
But, but it was, it was like a total of twelve.
Twelve.
Out of, um, five hundred and seventy-two cities, and I think it's, it's in this area, the coast of empire, Tybee, Statesboro, Savannah, uh, the city of Heinzville has it, but, um, and then there's some around Atlanta, Fulton County, South Fulton, um.
Heinzville?
Yeah, I said Heinzville, but a total of twelve.
Twelve counties that are, are united together?
Twelve counties and cities total in, in the state of Georgia.
Okay, okay, all right.
All right, what I don't wanna do is, uh, Sheriff, I don't know if your statement is more prevalent now, uh, when we bring it back, uh, we don't need to have the debate tonight and come back and debate again, um, let's just wait for the information, you guys are gonna present, and Sheriff, if you don't mind, you, you'll reschedule, come back, and, uh, with some.
Does the sheriff have some information now, of Mr. Chairman?
He, he, not information, but I think he was gonna make a statement, which, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna ask a question, I mean, I, I know this has been something Commissioner Frazier has talked about, and we've dealt with a lot of things here tonight, this board has, from saving lives, nine-one-one, to funding constitutional officers, to our county employees and all, and, um, I guess the sheriff can answer this question unless, Kelly, you still on the phone? Or he go to sleep?
Yes, sir, I'm still on the phone.
Well, let me ask you a question, is possession of marijuana in Liberty County right now against the law?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so, we wanting to try to make it not against the law?
No, that, that's.
No, I, I, I'm not sure, I might, might help, um, recap what we presented a few months earlier, you know, the, the misdemeanor marijuana, uh, possession ordinance would not, people use the term decriminalized, but it wouldn't, uh, it, it wouldn't make marijuana possession legal, it would still be a crime, but the question would, how would the, the crime be punished, and under most of the jurisdictions we've discussed, I think including Tybee most recently, possession of marijuana, misdemeanor marijuana possession is treated basically as a citation offense, so rather than appearing on your record as, um, you know, as, um, an actual conviction, it's, uh, it, in large, most cases won't even appear on your record, it's just like any other county citation offense, which usually is not reported to TCIC, um, and so, that's, that's the distinction we're making, it's not really that you're decriminalizing it or making it, um, legal, it's simply that you're specifying the punishment for possession, and it's misdemeanor possession only, it's for possession less than an ounce, and, and it's not under a separate statute, it's, I think as we mentioned last time, it's under the, uh, disorderly conduct, uh, ordinance that we would propose to pass, and as part of that, it stipulates that only a citation will be issued if you're disturbing the, the public peace and you, uh, have less than, um, an ounce of marijuana on your, on your person, so that, that's the distinction, it's not decriminalizing, it's just specifying the, the punishment.
Well, if I wasn't lost, I'm lost now, um, okay, so.
Basically, basically what they're saying, uh, is taking you from have to go and get arrested and then processed and at the jail, rather than just giving issuing you out a citation to like a traffic citation, that's not for you.
That's right, that's absolutely right.
Finger print of an offense.
Right, so, but the thing that, we haven't had, uh, a state court judge, a superior court judge, or a drug court judge, or nobody come up here and, and even bring this to our attention, I know I heard about it earlier on, maybe last year, but, I mean, I haven't heard anybody speaking in favor of it, I mean, are you hearing something different than I am?
Well, I think that was, uh, kind of the intention of waiting until maybe, uh, your next mid-month or next regular meeting, is so we can get more formal input, you know, from some of these stakeholders, like the state court solicitor or state court judge and law enforcement, and, you know, I know, I think we mentioned this last time, as a practical matter, I think the state court is doing what it can, basically address these, um, misdemeanor marijuana possession cases, um, kind of, uh, have them disposed of in some alternative, alternative fashion, rather than simply, you know, holding these people, finding people guilty of criminal offense, which they were charged, misdemeanor possession, I think they're providing for alternate, um, disposition like community service and things of that kind, but I, I think it'd be helpful to get their input, so that Commissioner Walden, you, others, myself, everyone knows what the position of, uh, you know, the local state court and solicitor is, as well as local law enforcement, and they can tell you if it's a burden on the system, is it disproportionately impacting, you know, youthful offenders, or, or, do we wanna do anything to address this, is it a problem and do we wanna address it, and so I think that would be helpful to get their input, and that's the reason I recommend that we wait until a future meeting.
Well, let's do that, y'all, and if it's the time, let's, let's just bring it back.
Yeah, this right here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, maybe this board just come to conclusion that we're gonna seek further information, and, um, gather all of the parties that needs to be involved and get their input.
That's what Kelly just said.
Bring it back.
That's where we are, all right.
And get all everyone's.
Economic development.
Is it still against the law?
Yes, sir.
Right now.
Yes, sir.
Against the law.
Economic development. Y'all got some?
I think we're to grow marijuana. Under economic development.
Economic development, Attorney Davis.
Yes, sir.
Maybe.
I think this might have been brought up at a past meeting, I'm not certain, but I think Commissioner, uh, Frazier wanted to bring it to the board's attention in a more formal fashion, and I think it was discussed that in the unincorporated areas of the county, there might be a need to have, uh, an authority or a body that's committed to the recruitment and development of, uh, retail business in the unincorporated areas of the county, you know, for the, for the larger city, I, I, actually, I think Heinzville might be the only municipality in the county that has its own development authority, and, you know, one of its more successful projects was the recruitment of the, uh, I think it's called Oggleford Plaza, but, you know, where the big sporting goods is.
Ogglefield Square.
And that was very successful, it's brought a lot of living into the county and employment, and I, I think that, you know, Commissioner Frazier's idea was to have a body that would kind of do the same things before the benefit of the other municipalities, smaller municipalities that don't have their own development authority in the unincorporated areas of the county, um, and, you know, right now, we really don't have that body that's focused on, on that, on that, that issue, we have our local development authority, which the chairman sits on, and they're primarily focused with, you know, the recruitment and intention of larger employers, whether it be manufacturing or distribution, or, you know, larger, larger industrial concerns like that, and in the past, they have considered retail projects, but it, it's been infrequent, and I think they'll, I think the authority will concede, it's not their primary focus, um, and so, I think that was Commissioner Frazier's idea, uh, I don't think he's, you know, stipulating the exact, um, mechanism or procedure, how this is done, but I think he would like to get a, to gather a group, maybe a few commissioners, uh, some mayors and some area business leaders, and get their thoughts, and if there's a need, and so, how, how, how we can best address that, you know, one potential idea is to create a statutory authority, which is permitted in a Georgia law, our local development authority is a, is a constitutional creation, but we can also create another, uh, development authority by statute, whose mission could be retail recruitment and development, and so that the. And so, the two missions of the two authorities wouldn't interfere with one another. But that's just one idea. It may be, may, it may simply be that we have a committee, you know, with, uh, area mayors and chamber of commerce and others, who make known the opportunities that perhaps the industrial authority can help with if you have a major retail development somewhere in the unincorporated areas of the county. But that, that's the initial thought, and so I, I think that Commissioner Frazier would wanna have a committee to look at the issue and report back to the board, and have you folks consider it.
You wanna add anything?
Uh, well, uh, I, I think he said it all.
Say it all.
Uh, basically, same thing Kelly just said, you know, we, we're looking at economic development, not just in the city of Hinesville, but more importantly, throughout the whole, uh, county, from the, the west to the, to the east, to the north, to the south. And I think if we have a, 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 a authority that just focused and put emphasis on that, it could kinda spread the, uh, the wealth throughout the en- entire, uh, community. And I know we, we've been excited about the, the sales tax numbers for the last year or so, but, uh, we have an opportunity to really increase on that as well. But it's, it's gonna take, you know, more development, sort of just like, uh, what we did when we were, well, when we were on the Hinesville Development Authority too, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, we, we have an opportunity in Liberty County. We have two exits off ninety-five. You know, uh, that, that alone, you know, we could, can recruit, you know, some, some businesses out there to, you know, help, help our bottom line. So, I would love to, you know, uh, have some type of committee together, so we can see how we can move forward.
So, you go, Kelly, you gonna have a template for that, or you gonna, y'all gonna sit together and kinda put that together?
I think it'd be helpful to have the, you know, committee's input first, you know, uh, one idea is a formal authority, and, and that template is well-established throughout the state.
Okay.
You know, we have probably hundreds of them. Uh, and the other might be just, you know, promoting with the local partners, making the smaller cities more aware of the opportunities that the industrial authority, others could offer, large retail developments. But, um, whatever it is, whether it's a formal solution or, uh, kind of a, an awareness approach, I think that probably there needs to be a group that together to study the needs and how we best address those needs. And I'll, and I'll be happy to participate and help, uh, Commissioner Frazier on that issue.
Okay.
And especially.
So I would, I would probably recommend that Chairman Frazier, you and Commissioner Frazier can get together and form a committee, and hopefully, uh, one or more other, at least one other commissioner might sit on the board, and maybe perhaps have a representative of the authority and some of the other municipalities who might be interested in participating, as well as some perhaps, you know, area business leaders. Uh, not too many folks, but enough to have significant input and identify what our needs are and how we go about, um, addressing those needs.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chairman, did, um, our development authority change in two thousand? To where we, um, can now work with motels, um, all of that changed, didn't it, for commercial businesses and all?
I don't know about change, but I know we can work with motels, 'cause we.
I know, but I thought there was some legislation that had to be passed. Jimmy, you remember that? Or you might not have. I thought it had to be introduced, that we, our Liberty County Development Authority used to only look at industry, and now, there was some.
We've been approached by motels, and we hadn't done anything with that, but we've been approached. Kelly, that, is that new, Kelly? When, when I came on board, that was, that was already in progress.
As far as, uh, retail involved by the industrial authority?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that wasn't a result of any new law. You know, in Georgia, you have basically two kinds of development authorities. Most, I would say ninety-five percent are created by statute, and they're authorized to undertake all kinds of projects, much like in our local industrial authority, whether it's industrial, distribution, manufacturing, but also retail, you know, commerce generally. And then ours is a constitutionally-created authority, and it, it has broader powers, but it, it has all those powers as well. If the local affor, industrial authority decided to issue bonds or, or, you know, grant tax abatements to, you know, a, a retail project, it could. In fact, I think, although historically it's been reluctant to, because the, the economic impact hasn't been sufficient enough, I think, to warrant tax abatements. I, I guess it was probably maybe five or seven years ago now, that the authority did issue bonds for the Kroger Supercenter that was proposed. Unfortunately, Kroger decided not to build the project, but the authority did issue bonds for that, for that project, because of that, it was gonna have significant, uh, economic impact, both in employment and investment. And so, the authority is able and authorized to, to assist with large-scale economic, uh, uh, retail projects that have, you know, significant impacts. But I, I think its focus has not been that in the past.
I, I remember Chairman McCaw mentioned that, something about it.
Be able to assist.
They were changing to where they could do other than, and I believe the conversation was, could they build a motel? Could the development authority fund for a motel? Well, you know, they never had before, but now I understand that they're able to do that.
It wasn't a change in the law. I think it's just a change in willingness. You know, I think what you're referring to, Commissioner Walden, is perhaps maybe a, a hotel at the interchange. And I think, you know, even if the hotel may not have the traditional economic impact of some of the other projects the authority's been involved in.
Right.
You know, something, something like that at that location would be important, because it would promote, hopefully, and spur other economic growth in, in that quadrant. And that would assist not only the county and the development of that interchange, but also benefit, you know, the existing workforce and industries that are there. You can provide lodging and hopefully encourage, you know, development of re, more restaurants and things like that that would benefit the park.
I think, I think the, uh, interchanges, both of them were, were mentioned, but I, yeah, that's just something that, for some reason.
You, you, it's, you, it's a good illustration, because in the past, I think the authority's been reluctant to involve itself in retail operations, because, you know, I think other, say, for example, in this case, other area hotels would regard it as perhaps unfair, or, you know, providing a competitive va, advantage to, you know, to another hotel. And I think that's why the authority has been reluctant to involve itself in retail operations.
Okay.
But I think admittedly, it's because those projects haven't been significant enough. You know, I think, I think the Kroger Supercenter and the Oggleford Plaza are probably the first two large-scale retail projects that we've had that warranted that kind of involvement, and hopefully, there'll, there'll be more of that in the future as well.
Alright.
I mean, I think one, one thing is just a matter of workload and time over there, the industrial authority.
You gonna have staff.
With their staff and everything, but focus on the manufacturing industrial to the point where, as just a result, retail hasn't necessarily been a priority. Kelly, you correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, when the committee looking at all this thing, I think it's important, I think it's a great idea, but if you, if you went the statutory authority route for this purpose, it would open the benefit of having the power of bonds and tax abatements to the school, rather than not having a formal authority created. Is that right, Kelly?
I, I couldn't really hear, but, uh, you know, regardless of the authority, whether it's statutory or our own local constitutional authority, you know, there has to be a cost-benefit analysis undertaken that, that justifies the incentives and the tax savings that are granted these projects. So regardless, if, if the project, whoever, whoever undertakes it, whether it's a new authority or the existing authority, there has to be a significant economic impact to justify the incentives they're given. That's the analysis that our authority, uh, undertakes with each project and, you know, all other.
Gotta pass that test.
Authorities undertake as well. But, but I, I think, I think as I admitted earlier, I think even our authority would admit, retail has not been their,
No.
their focus, uh, historically, you know, because it, it traditionally doesn't have that sort of impact that, that I discussed.
Okay. Alright, so if I heard you right, then we need to sit down and, and, um, discuss committee composition.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, we'll do that, Kelly.
Okay, well, just put together, work with you, uh, Chairman, and put together a committee to look at the issue.
You mean Commissioner Frazier, yeah.
Yes, sir. Alright, I'll be happy to.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Reapportionment agreement, McDonald and Associates. Mr. McDonald is here.
And, uh, Ms. McDonald is, is obviously here, but as you're aware, we're going through the reapportionment game a little bit, which is pretty tenuous, and uh, I know we had talked about the ability to possibly engage somebody that might have some knowledge to walk us through that process, and luckily, we probably got a guy with the most knowledge, uh, right here to write. So, uh, Ms. McDonald has presented a proposal for us to do that. I do want to tell you this money is in the budget. On a professional service, just to be able to do this, should the board desire.
And just to add to that, if my credentials need to be shared.
That, that, that was my question.
Alright, yes, sir. Mr. Frazier.
What, what makes you qualify to, to, uh?
Prior to my tenure as having the privilege of representing my home county and my home city, I spent six years as legislative council of the general assembly, and as part of that, dealt with reapportionment issues as a lawyer, and after that, was appointed to be the executive director of the reapportioning congressional office, where during the, after post the last census, I drew all the congressional legislative districts in the state of Georgia, so.
So you were the line drawer?
I was the line drawer.
So I need luck, Mr. Chairman, that he's, uh, he's the man for the job.
I think so. Yes, sir, we're guaranteed a motion.
Make a motion that Mr. McDonald come on board and get him a desk.
Motion and a second that we approve the agreement between Mr. McDonald and Liberty County Board of Commissioners to help with the reapportionment exercises.
We're gonna start it, we're gonna start this away though, this time, Jimmy. Six, and then we'll work down to five.
I have one contingency now.
Is that part of your motion?
Every one of y'all still gotta like me at the end of this. That wasn't the case at the legislative level.
All in favor of agreeing, raise your right hand, please.
I was, I literally had a legislator take a swing at it.
I'm sorry.
You gonna vote it?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens, I appreciate you if you don't come at me too hard during this, alright?
I got, I got a couple of.
I'm four Miller Parks, sir.
We all are.
The only question I have is, Sheriff, was, um, Jimmy, was, um, you just be dealing with the commissioners, or you be dealing with the Board of Education? So, my, I guess my question is, is this amount of money going to cover, or do you have a contract with the Board of Education?
It, it'll cover both, Alchemist Stevens, uh, because you'll be coming in with Board of Education members at the same time. And he'll also be in the room with us, and it'll help with, with the finite of those lines in the end, once y'all decide where you wanna put them.
So we can tell the Board of Education, just take whatever we give them, 'cause they ain't paying nothing. Right?
Does he sit down with each one of his?
Right.
Well.
We'll get to that.
The, the Steam County manager and I have been discussing about a process, and what I've suggested, and what really worked at the statewide level, which I think would be scaled down and does work, is now that we do have the numbers and have an idea of where the growth was and where it wasn't, I, I've found that it's better to work, to, to sit down with each of you individually on your districts and get a sense individually where you are, and if you've gotta give up people, where do you wanna give them up? If you gotta gain people, where would you rather gain them? Let us kind of incorporate that into a map for the fir, so that the first time you see a redrawn map, it has as much of that already in it as possible. And then if there's wrinkles that need to be ironed out, that's something that's done by the commission as a whole, because I found it kinda productive, that if the first map you look at is the one that hasn't been balanced out at all, because then we get stuck in the weeds about, I want this, or I don't want that, or you don't want this. If we get that from you individually on the front end, and then allow us to draw the map that balances out, because I'll just give you a quick elevator tidbit on the restrictions or why it's important for the county to do this. There's really only, now the section five is no longer in place of the Voting Rights Act. We no longer have to submit our maps to, to Department of Justice. So there is no preclearance, as there always has been. But that doesn't mean that the, that the Voting Rights Act doesn't apply, and the way the courts have interpreted courting acts, uh, uh, acts apply. So we would have to make sure things like one man, one vote and deviation, that means having the districts as, almost as equal as possible in number. But then we also meet the fact that our minority majority districts, if we have any, must be maintained. And then lastly, that we're not stacking or packing any single district with minority numbers in order to create another major, majority majority district over here. So those are the type of things we'll be looking at, but that's on the objective legal side. On the subjective side, it's what y'all want. You might be trying to get rid of a constituent who's been bugging you for ten years, or whatever. And those are the kind of things, I think it works better in a one-on-one conversation, so that we can go ahead and incorporate those things, get it as close to balanced out and federally legal as possible. And then if there is some discussions and negotiations that need to be happened within y'all, it's coming when the map is already kind of balanced out, and you have a quasi-finished product in front of you.
Any other questions for Mr. McDonald?
You answered all of mine.
Look forward to working with you, sir.
As always.
How many hours you gonna put in a day?
Sir?
How many hours you gonna put in a day?
As many as you need me to.
Oh, wow.
And then you know, and y'all know that I'm right back behind you now, right? Are y'all aware that I'm practicing over at J O J now?
I, I was.
I, I hope everybody knows that I've brought my family home. I'm living local now. I'm gonna be commuting to Atlanta as needed for our needs.
Okay.
But, um, I'm also practicing law over at J O J now, so I'm Kelly's law partner.
Okay.
So we got a lawyer that's gonna help us out.
Yes, sir.
With expense. Sounds like a good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Good to have you home.
Always.
Yes, sir.
Glad to be here. Thank you, everybody.
I guess, Joey, uh, when are we gonna start to, start the process?
You, you, you already got the maps, your map, um, and with your deviation numbers. I got some more stuff tonight, uh, to be able to give you that. Um, and then I'll fall back to Mr. McDonald then to schedule meetings with, with you guys, uh, to talk about your deviation number.
Now, didn't you say C, C R, CRC was gonna help us?
Actually, CRC stands Ready to, they're, they're the ones that generated these maps.
Right.
Uh, because we loaded them into MapTune, so we'll be giving you this tonight, so, again, I'll leave it to Mr. McDonald to.
So we have CRC.
And if that works, you have to hope is that it all synergizes with all of them. And the, and the, going on, get down to the map to, I mean, they're bringing you a map that satisfies everything legally that we have to satisfy, but satisfies your bullet.
What's the margin of error? I mean, a percentage, is, is it three percent or two percent?
There, there is no margin of error.
Zero.
They want it as, as equally balanced.
Equally balanced.
They want it balanced, and then, uh, you basically have to report to.
Constitutionally, provisions, one man, one vote. So the idea is if you can get as close to one man, one vote as possible, they're balanced out. So, at the state level, what we generally try to do is keep the deviation within one percent. You're within one percent, you're safe. The, you, when you start getting over three percent, you start raising eyebrows, so. Or we'll be shooting for the one percent number.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you also just have to report to reapportionment. According to the presentation we got the other day, if, if it's, if it's not balanced or anything that's not balanced, you, you've gotta just send a note as to why you couldn't balance.
There has to be a ra, there, there's an outline and a memo that I'll provide, Joey. There has to be a rational basis for not satisfying the balance. You have to be able to point to something and say, that's the reason why. There's not a lot of reasons where it would be justified. But once again, y'all, I know it's late.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Georgia State Fiscal Recovery Fund.
This is, uh, this is what we were gonna bring back to you tonight, to see what you decide you wanna do for application for a grant, uh, on these funds. The state offer grant, this is, this is your east water system expansion for Lewis-Frazier Road area. It's basically already been designed, that we talked about last time. Uh, you see the project cost estimate and the funding sources that are out there, uh, for that. Clint, if you can, or you hit the next one, please. This, this is what you talked about on the expansion piece of that, uh, to go to the west side of the tracks in McIntosh. You see the cost estimate on that at three-point-three million. Uh, it has not been designed. Uh, the funding sources that, that would be out there, you gotta have a match, and this, we're projecting a sixty-fourty match. It could be less, it could be more. I think it's important to, to know that what we're recommending is you submit these as two separate projects, so that one doesn't kill the other. If the state doesn't feel like they can come up or wants to contribute a million dollars to this side, it doesn't kill the design that's already done on the, on your east side project.
Joey, you say this right here has not been, how, where, how'd you get your numbers?
Uh, called Trent and put together a cost estimate.
And, and the other side was to where now?
Other side is, uh, if you remember. Other side is, uh, if you remember, uh, the extension that we didn't get to finish going down Lewis-Frazier Road.
Right.
To Riceboro's Water System.
Right.
On that side. That was, that was one that was already designed by Matthew Barrow, but the funding wasn't there for that, and so we were waiting on to get the block grant funding for it, then this came available.
What, why is this one right here so much higher? I mean, I don't understand it, because the distance is shorter.
More, more residents, more businesses to serve.
On this end?
On this side, yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Well, so you'll make your money back, wouldn't you?
Uh, provided they come online or, you know, to do that. Eventually, you'd make your money back, yes. But that's what it would, the other thing is, that's what it would take on both of these, you're looking at your commitment from your local ARPA funds.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one point three million on this, if it gets funded, uh, and, and on the other, uh, Clint, if you can back up one more time, on the other, the local ARPA would be 339,000, because it does get an infusion of splash money that's already been allocated to the project, and I have an old splash that you were holding to match the block grant funds.
Now, this would include the, the hookup?
It does not include connections.
Does not need, does not include the connection?
No, sir, but it will run all the way to the end of the line, so that could be provided. But that's our recommendation as far as on the water side. We, we, we issue those as two separate applications for the grant, and just see what happens. And then the final piece, uh, Clint, on the last one there, was the Interstate Paper Road project, you know, in T-Splash, it is a designated project, it already has a million and a half dollars allocated to it in T-Splash, but yet the project cost budget has always been right around $3 million, and so if the board so desired in order to try to get money for that project, uh, it could apply for some, some of those state ARPA funds also, to try to do that project to match up with your funds.
I thought we had a million set aside.
No, it was actually a million and a half, because it was 50% of the cost of the project.
Was that just a resurface?
Hmm?
Interstate?
That'll be about the third.
Total, it's, I think Trent did a presentation on it sometime back, but it's a total, uh, mill and grind and refill of that roadway.
That's gonna be interesting.
It's a basis.
Yeah, 'cause those trucks.
Because the basis is just deteriorated so bad.
I'll say one thing on that project, if that project ever get going, that project is gonna, gonna need to be done, uh, at night, at nighttime.
Those are the, you know, we, we, our deadline is, we need to go ahead and put those applications in the hopper. We've got the east end ready to go on the water system, because you'd already talked about that, uh, and the west side is almost finished, too. I mean, we could, we can make all of these applications if that's what y'all wanna do, or if you wanna do something different.
Would our biggest hassle on the water on the west side be the, the railroad track, probably?
Uh, yes, sir, not undoable, though. I mean, you know, just, it's a time element, basically is what it is, and if you remember, you've got, uh, really, really, the projects don't have to be fully finished by 2026 now, especially infrastructure projects, but you've got to have the money fully committed by 2024 on your local funds.
So, uh, but hearing what you're saying, if, how long do you think that applying for the permit to drill the bore under that railroad would take if you apply for it now?
They don't, nobody knows that.
Well, so what'll happen is, CSX has a defined process in that.
Mm-hmm.
You would, you would make application to them, you'd send them a set of plans, and then you actually pay them for their review time, uh, for, for coming across there right away. Uh, it, it's not inordinate, I mean, uh, six months.
Okay.
Probably.
Commissioner Stevens, if you go in on, if you go in on Homestown Road, and where the canal goes underneath Homestown Road. You've got water right there. You got a hydrant right there. You can come up our canal and go all the way in there, that boring under the road, I don't, I mean, there's one way to go if you, uh, Martin going to a gourd, but there's another way to go, and you can go down that canal bank that belongs to us and go to anywhere you need to there. I mean, the boring, it's not gonna be a big deal, you're not gonna have CSX get out here in Fata County that wants to put clean drinking water in places as house, now, I mean, I, I, that right there is the easiest thing to do is nothing, and I will agree with that. And it's not my district, but I can tell you, I see the growth that's gonna be in there, and we ought to capture it. Now, we can tie to Riceboro, and we can also tie to Hinesville. If we needed it, we can tie to Hinesville up to Flemington, up to the, to the high school.
But we can't tie to Midway.
Do what now?
Can't tie in the Midway.
Well, I wouldn't want to right now, I mean, I think there are some issues down there, but I think you could tie into, to a well that's already established in McIntosh County, but, I mean, the boring, I, I mean, I've seen people bore 24-inch, you know, 300 feet, so it's not a, that's not a big issue, and I'm sure the railroad's not gonna fight us over that. There may be a little bit, but they ain't gonna fight us too bad.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this may be off, but I, I just need to ask this question, and Mr. Long is gone. I noticed that we got some clearing going down on 84 next to the Convenience Center. And, Mr. Brown, you might wanna check to see if that's going to alter any of our plans going in that road, what's going to go there.
Um, you talking about the Convenience Center at Miller Park?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Uh-huh. That, that, that front, I guess it was the Huey Jeffrey piece?
But that piece is still for sale, right?
No, it, well, it's cleared now.
It's cleared.
It's cleared.
Yeah, I saw it clear.
It's cleared, so you might wanna, I'm sorry, I was chairman, but I just thought about that.
But it's for sale, so, I mean, I thought it was.
So you just need that consensus to move forward with this, sir?
If, if, if that's the decision.
Yes, sir. Need a motion? Uh, just a consensus?
We don't really, I'm, I mean, we're, we're okay, we would need a motion if we get the grant to accept it.
Okay, well, move forward, see if we can get it.
We're gonna move the gum branch.
Yes, sir.
Appointments, ACCG Voting Delegate.
Although you ain't giving none of your money, but I'm with you.
It's that time again where the, uh, ACCG's guarantee to do this policy adoption, and uh.
I thought you had the money.
The board just needs to designate somebody to be the voting delegate on behalf of the board.
Which one?
Uh, ACCG.
Okay.
Sir, I think we need to keep our, our current delegate.
Huh?
Mr. Brown?
No, uh, Commissioner Stevens.
Mr. Stevens? You going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Make a motion, we.
Just need a motion.
I make a motion, we, uh, appoint Mr. Stevens, the ACCG Voting Delegate.
Second.
Reappoint.
Reappoint.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Can I vote for myself?
Let me see it. EMS Region Nine.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, we need to make, uh, appointment to that Region Committee, um, you know, previously, under your other director that was there, he was appointed, but we haven't appointed the new director, which is customary for the EMS, uh, that'd be Mr. Crystal Hensler. There, there was also, um, the chairman of that group also recommended that we appoint the assistant director there, so that Liberty County could have two positions on that board, and so, uh, yeah, that'd be great, it's the EMS Region Nine Council, if the board so desires.
So it's Crystal and who then?
Crystal Hensler and Gene Long.
All right, Commissioners, Chair, attend the motion.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we, uh, appoint to the EMS Region Nine, appointment for our EMS Director, Crystal Hensley, and our Assistant, Gene Long.
Second?
Second.
Motion, second, we appoint Crystal and Gene Long to the EMS Region Nine Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, will you raise your right hands?
One against.
They appointed, sir. One, one no?
No.
Announcement, sir?
Uh, one quick thing, and this, because these just came to you, so at your desk, uh, you'll see some handout, and what I've given you is every district, every county and district, um, this is an example, I think, of the, of the, of the park. So District One, for example, what you're gonna see, these are your new district numbers. Uh, your population in the district is shown, uh, on the right, and those values, for instance, uh, District One, population, uh, 10,00293, 10,00293, there's a deviation of minus 583, so that is the number of people that district needs to pick up in order to be balanced, okay? And it's, and subsequent, you see some other demographic statistics that are there, this is a MapTitude, uh, print, if we flip the district to, and I don't go through all of them, but if we flip the district to, deviation you see there is short 2,255 people, okay? So, so that's the number of people it has to pick up to be balanced. Same token, District Three, deviation to the positive 3166, that's the number it needs to give up in order to have all the districts balanced, okay?
Can I just stop you right there, right quick? What, what these little numbers in the map mean?
Okay, so, so the, the little numbers in the map are at, you've got two things. Let Clint drill down with this website real quick, 'cause I'm gonna show you a website you can go to, too, uh, to look at. This, this is the county as a whole, and this is, uh, let's see if you can click that off, come on in.
All right.
Okay, so, so these funny little things, it is not showing the, yeah, okay, that's really, yeah, these are actually the census blocks in district, okay? And so you can see how abnormal and ab-shaped they, or odd-shaped they are. One block got 77 people in it, one block got 70 in it, none in this census block. So, so what you can't do when you redraw your lines is you can't break a census block.
Right.
Now, if I can answer your questions, MapTitude printed, these are our district precincts, they're different, and they were picked up by precincts, but what you're gonna be working with, when you work with Mr. McDonald, are these census blocks. If you gotta pick up 47, you got a census block with 47, what you just gotta remember is you can't split the census block.
Right.
And you'll go over with you what the lines have to do, they can't just, in other words, this, you, you couldn't draw, uh, go back, you couldn't draw a new district line right here, you can zoom out. I'm sorry, okay? You couldn't draw a new census line, or a new boundary line right here, because there's no natural.
River, railroad track.
Railroad track, it's not follow a natural demarcation line, so to speak. It's already in existence, and so those are the kind of things you're gonna be looking at, but I wanted to give you both of those as you go in, and we'll forward you, I wanna forward you this website address, so you can go on your computer, it's actually off of our webpage, and you can zoom exactly right here. And so as you know, you've gotta give up five, or give up 2,200, or gain 583, you can use this map kind of as a guide, but you can also go in there and zoom wherever you wanna look in your district, or countywide, you know, and I wanna give you every district so that you know who you're next to, and y'all can start some of that conversation.
Kenny.
I don't know if that's good news or bad news, but I want you, that's the, that, that is as drilled down as you can get it.
Wow, you need 22.
Yeah, he needs 22.
Justin, you may wind up with that new park out there.
That's what I would say, that's what I would say. Man, hey, I, I might, I might have to throw some money on, on that little project.
And it's a marriage that just had roads paved, and I'm like.
All right. I, I can't make it that far.
But that's what I have for you, just to give you that, so, and there's all kind of demographics you can get in there, but that's the basic work you'll be doing. You know what you gotta gain, you know what you gotta give up, you gotta figure out where you want that line.
Can, can that link be sent to us?
There you go, send it to us.
The link, yes, sir, we gonna send you that.
Okay. Kinda seem like you and I need to. That's it. Running around together.
I know.
Y'all better, that's what, on Fridays.
I'll work individually.
I'm off next week, I'll give you a call. All right, is that all for the good order?
Uh, I need to get, I guess, see Commissioner, Reverend Commissioner Frazier, please.
Oh, yes, our, our turn to appoint the, okay.
And, 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 Mr. Brown, just before you know, when someone's term is up, their term is actually, wasn't it, wasn't it saying that they cannot, they can only serve X amount of term?
Uh, on some boards. Now, the hos, the hospital board is one of those, in their bylaws, they have some stipulations that you can't serve any more than, I think it's three or four consecutive. So, so it's not all of them, that you have.
So can you file us a copy of the?
Absolutely.
Copy of the bylaws, so we can have something to go by.
You had to rotate off.
And, and we, we're gonna need to take a look at this one, I think we got an application already on this one.
Do y'all have one for, um?
Frazier.
Yeah, I think, did it, did it re-advertize?
No, I don't know, it, it was not advertised.
Did y'all, did y'all have one for the library board?
I think we still have a position on there to fill.
Still got one on that one.